Good afternoon, everybody. We can have your attention, get our meeting to order. Counselor Nero will be with us shortly, just running a little bit behind. Before we get going, I just want to acknowledge, on behalf of council, the great work of Team Jacobs this past week at the National Championship. We know Team Jacobs being undisputedly one of the best curling teams in the world has very high expectations of itself, and we wanted to know that we're very proud of its silver medal and how it represented Sault Ste. Marie this past week, so good work, Team Jacobs. A special thank you to our broadcasting partners, both Local Two and Shaw. I understand that the broadcast is still going well and getting quite a bit of viewership, so we appreciate their partnership in that respect. With those things noted, I'll pass the meeting on to Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Turco, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2015-0223 be approved.
Any questions, councilors? Not all in favor? Approved unanimously, thank you.
Agenda Item 3, Declarations of Key Area Interests, I know that we have some.
Okay, we'll start with Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 11-1.2, Bylaw 2015-44, spouse employed by police services.
Thank you. Is that it, Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Counselor Bruny?
The port of Algoa, the EDC involved in that. No?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Bruny, there are two items involving the port of Algoa. The EDC is reporting on one, but it's just an information report.
Okay. Okay. If after we've canvassed item, Counselor Bruny, you want to declare conflict, you can't at that time. Okay, thanks. Counselor Mano?
Item 6.5, excuse me, on the list, cultural, financial assistance grants. I am a member of the Rotary Club of Sault Ste. Marie, and they're one of the receivers under that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Kompadich.
I got two items to declare. One is 612, Port of Algoa, an employee of Essar. And Item 781, Port of Algoa, employee of Essar.
Thank you, Counselor. Do we have any others, councilors? If not, let...we can move on.
Under Agenda Item 4, Approve Agenda as Presented, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Turco, resolve that the agenda for the 2015-0309 City Council Meeting and the addendum as presented be approved.
Any questions, councilors? All in favor?
Under Agenda Item 5.1, International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, Danny Krampadich, Programs Coordinator, Local Immigration Program is in attendance.
Welcome, Mr. Krampadich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Just a couple of short paragraphs before we move on. The International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination is an opportunity for us, along with the whole of our community, to renew our commitment to building a world of justice, equality, and dignity where racial discrimination has no place. On this day, Mr. Mayor, we must recall the respect of others is essential to the respect of ourselves and that humanity is a single family brought together by shared aspirations and a common destiny. Lasting peace can only be built on the equality and dignity of everyone, regardless of ethnic, religious, gender, socioeconomic, or other backgrounds. On behalf of the Local Immigration Partnership, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you. We have a proclamation. Whereas the city of Sault Ste. Marie is committed to the belief that equal opportunity and treatment should exist for all people, and whereas the concept of diversity encompasses acceptance and respect and recognizes that each individual is unique, this includes race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, age, physical ability, religious belief, political belief, or other ideology. A community that values diversity moves beyond simple tolerance to embracing and celebrating the uniqueness of every individual. And whereas the General Assembly of the United Nations has designated March 21st as the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, and whereas the elimination of racial discrimination and racism can be accomplished through understanding and respect for the dignity of all people and is the social and moral responsibility of each person, now therefore I, Christian Provinciano, by virtue of the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, hereby proclaim that March 21st, 2015, as the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Red Cross Month, Taylor Doss, volunteer and Diane Lejeune, District Branch Manager, Canadian Red Cross Society, Sault Ste. Marie branch, are in attendance.
How are we doing today?
Good.
Welcome to council.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Taylor Doss, and I'm a volunteer at the Canadian Red Cross. I volunteer as a friendly visitor, as a disaster management volunteer, and I'm currently doing my placement at the Red Cross. I'm a Peace and Conflict Studies student at Sault College. Mission of the Canadian Red Cross is to improve the lives of vulnerable people by mobilizing the power of humanity in Canada and around the world. March is Red Cross Month, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie for their support through donations of both their time and financially, which has enabled us to work towards our mission. This is an exciting year for Sault Ste. Marie branch because we are celebrating our 100th anniversary. We will be planning some fun and interactive events throughout the year with more closer to our anniversary date of November 22nd. Whether it's assisting people who have been devastated by personal disasters such as house fire or flood, or helping to care for people who have been evacuated from their homes due to disaster, Red Cross volunteers are ready to help. Our volunteers assist families to learn how to shop for and prepare low-cost nutritious meals to take home to their families. They drive seniors to medical appointments or grocery shopping, and they visit seniors who are isolated, alone, or frail, too frail to leave their homes. Our district branch manager was here last month talking about our home maintenance program, which helps seniors stay safely in their own homes by providing housing, house cleaning, snow removal, and grass cutting services. We are always so grateful for the support this community has shown us in our fundraising activities. In January, we held our first shelter shenanigans, which was a way to show the community what it might be like in a shelter. We had participants from fire, police, EMS, and even Counselor Judy Hoponen participate and gather pledges. We are into the final three weeks of our 20th and final annual Northern Raffle, where the tickets are still only $10 for a chance to win a 2015 Nissan Pathfinder $25,000 cash prize. Second prize is 2015 Polaris Sportsman, and there are five draws for third place. For those in the community who would like to purchase a ticket, stop by the office at any time. Throughout the month of March, many local...we invite the community to find out more about the local branch. Stop by the office at 105 Allard Street anytime, give us a call, or check out the Canadian Red Cross website. You might be surprised at all we have to offer: senior services you or a loved one may need, First Aid CPR babysitting course, the beautiful Allard Street Garden, and many opportunities to volunteer. So on behalf of the Canadian Red Cross, Sault Ste. Marie branch, I want to thank the mayor and council, the many departments of the city that we work in collaboration with, and mostly the members of a great community for the support they have shown and continue to show us in our efforts to assist the most vulnerable. A heartfelt thank you to the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Taylor, for your work. It's nice to see students engaged in the community and doing good work. We have a proclamation, whereas the Canadian Red Cross Society has been engaged in preventing and alleviating human suffering across Canada and around the world for over 100 years. And whereas the Canadian Red Cross Society has helped thousands of Canadians through its disaster relief and community health and wellness services, including our own citizens of Sault Ste. Marie. And whereas the Canadian Red Cross Society, Sault Ste. Marie branch, this year celebrates its 100th anniversary milestone. And whereas the Canadian Red Cross Society is a reflection of the Canadian spirit of generosity, caring, and selflessness, now therefore I, Christian Provinciano, by virtue of the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, hereby proclaim March 2015 as Red Cross Month here in Sault Ste. Marie. I also urge all residents of Sault Ste. Marie to support the Canadian Red Cross Society and our community by regularly volunteering their time or by financially supporting Red Cross programs across the world and across the street. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have two departmental presentations tonight. The first one is the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library, and Roxanne Risson, the Director of Libraries, is here.
Welcome, Roxanne.
Thank you very much. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but what I'll do is I'll go ahead and get started. The Sault Ste. Marie Public Library is governed by a library board of 11 members. One of the newest projects that the board has been involved in is Board Cafe. This was the result of a successful application for a provincial grant, and we have two library professionals that come in to work with the library board in helping them to further their governance.
Yeah, Roxanne, you can hold on a second.
Okay.
Frank's just gonna pull up your...oh, there you go. Here it is.
Sorry about that. Okay. So we'll go to the third one. Thank you. So the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library Board adopted the following mission statement for the library. The Sault Ste. Marie Public Library is a comfortable and welcoming environment where young readers are created, and people of all ages can stimulate their imagination, satisfy their curiosity, connect to the online world, and gather in appealing physical and online spaces. Last year, the library had a total of 495,467 visits. 158,080 of those were visits to our library website, and 344,387 were physical visits to our three library locations. The Sault Ste. Marie Public Library Board has also determined the library's values to be excellent customer service, open and free access for all, intellectual freedom and personal privacy, collaboration with local agencies, organizations, and elected officials, acting with initiative, creativity, and flexibility, effective and efficient stewardship of library resources, effective communication, and continually improvement and planning for the future. In 2014, the public library again collaborated with the Sioux Greyhounds, as well as Kinder Music, Vaughn, Searchmont, CAP, and Sault College, along with Zonta, Cambria and Nissan, Kiwanis Club, and Rotary. The circulation of our electronic collections, which include eBooks, downloadable audiobooks, e-magazines, totaled 42,335. Our public internet stations are still very well utilized at all three library locations with a total of 36,729 bookings across all library locations. In 2015, the library's budget is estimated at $3.4 million, with $2.8 million coming from the municipality. The current library budget makes up 3% of the municipal tax levy and 1.6% of the overall city budget. The library continues to be fiscally responsible. This year, we will be finishing up our project to replace our chillers at the Centennial Library. This project has an estimated cost of just over $400,000, and we have been able to do that by saving our...the $80,000 that we receive from the city. So we are very careful with the funds that we do receive from the city. We also offer programs in our community. Some of them are Community Corner Fort Storytime, the Station Mall Storytime, Spring Expo, Passport to Unity, and Festival of Trees. With the over 31 programs that the library offered out in the community, we were able to connect with 4,136 people. Currently, our Centennial Library is open during the winter hours for a total of 68 hours per week. The Cora branch is open for 43 hours per week, and the Churchill branch is open for 40 hours per week at this time. For the services for...yeah. So some of the services that the library offers for our adults and seniors in our community are book clubs, gardening programs. We have a very popular Seniors Keep Driving program, and last year, we started the winter driving tips for seniors. We also offer free computer classes all year long, as well as financial literacy programs and civic literacy programs. Our seniors programs that the library offers provide our seniors with opportunities to improve their quality of life, maintain and improve their mobility, and maintain their independence, as well as meet and interact with others. One of the newest programs that we have going on for seniors at the Centennial Library is in combination with Vaughn, and we offer a program twice weekly for seniors, and it helps them to maintain their mobility and also to prevent falls, which we know is such a drastic...can have such a drastic impact on our seniors. The Sault Ste. Marie Public Library also holds programs for young adults. 58 programs were held last year with 353 teens attending, and as we all know, we're so proud of our city now receiving the platinum rating for a youth-friendly community, so that's very thrilling to see. One of the things that the library is well-known for is our children's programs. We offer quite a bit listed. One of our newest programs is Baby Picasso, which involves parents or caregivers bringing their babies to the library, and they paint and create artwork with edible things like pudding and things like that. So that's a very, very popular program. It's always filled with a waiting list. And at this point in time, I would like to take the opportunity to invite you, Mr. Mayor, and all of council, to allow me to take you on a tour of our facilities and show you what other things we have at the library, what things we're looking at in the future. One of the things that we're looking at creating is a maker space. I know when I was a kid, my brothers had Lincoln Logs, and that's something that we're gonna be bringing back to the library building, having those hands-on, creative opportunities for children to share with their adults and caregivers.
Thank you very much. Councilors, do we have any questions? Start with Counselor Butland.
Just one question, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to bring up the controversy of a year or so ago, so I won't, but at any rate...
After you do.
But it put something on the table.
Yes.
And it looked like you and we and everybody was looking at potentially other locations, the need thereof. Are we...are you and the board proceeding in that area?
We are. We have contacted the Innovation Center, and they have done a study citywide to look at potential places for the library. That is something that will be coming to the library board. I will be presenting to the library board at their meeting later on this month.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Fatah.
Can you give me an approximate number of visits for each of the three locations?
I can. At the Churchill branch, it was 56,000 people who visited that branch. At the Churchill branch library, I believe it was 69,000 people who visited that...I mean, sorry, at the Cora branch. Sorry, that was 69,000. And at the Centennial Library, we had just under 225,000 visits to the library.
In your opinion, is the main branch utilized to the fullest extent, or would you say that there's room there for expansion, perhaps, and unnecessarily physical expansion, but just expansion in terms of how...like how it is being utilized?
I would have to say, in comparison to when I started, there has been a huge expanse in the number, quality, and amount of programming and ways we bring in the public to the Centennial Library. We have quite a few more children's programs. We have teen programs. We do have quite a few more seniors programs, as I had mentioned, our Vaughn program. I think all libraries are in the same boat. We're looking at programming as a way of bringing in people to the library to be able to show them what other resources the library has to offer them and help them succeed in their lives.
If I may follow through on...
Absolutely.
Is there any affiliation between the city libraries and the libraries at Algoa U and Sault College? Is there anything...any relationship?
We do get together at both locations for...they both have a job fair early in the year. Sault College has a job fair, I believe it's in January. We go out to that location. We have gone out to there, I believe it was two years ago in the fall. We also do the same thing at Algoa University. We are always invited over there for their job fairs. We have the resources to help job seekers find what they're looking for, also resume resources at the library as well. So we do have partnerships with them.
And you are aware that there are members that are non-students that do use both libraries, right?
Yes, yes. The majority of them are adults, young adults and, you know, adults.
Can you give me an approximate date that the Stilton branch library closed down and why it closed down?
From what I understood, the Stilton branch shut down, I believe it was in 1969. I can get that correct date for you. The reason that it shut down, I believe, was because of the renovations that were required for that location.
The building is still there, so the building is still there intact, so obviously it wasn't major renovations, it was more cosmetic.
Counselor Fatah, I mean, if it closed in 1969, she might not have the particulars of...
No, I'm just making a kind of a general observation. I'm not expecting details from her. I'm just saying, it closed down because it needed renovations to continue operating as a library, even though it continues to operate as a function of...
Exactly. I will tell you that the requirements for public libraries has changed even since I became a librarian, even since I moved here. The weight requirement, I mean Elliot Lake is just an example, but the rate requirement for a public library is 300 pounds per square foot, that you have to have that in the supporting structure. So to be able to retrofit a building that was built for a library that had 1,500 volumes when it started to a library that had 20,000 volumes, that's a huge retrofit. And to be able to be fiscally responsible to make those retrofits to that building, I think...I don't think it's fiscally responsible to do that.
And one final question. Can you tell us the rent that's paid at the Churchill Plaza location?
Yeah. It's just under $98,000 per year. I do also have the heat and hydro if you would like that number as well.
That's fine. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Fatah. Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned on one of your slides that the libraries used by Ware, Gouley, Laird, McDonald, Searchmont, and Tarbit.
Yes.
Do you track what percentage of usage is from those communities as opposed to people actually from the Sioux?
I can get those numbers for you. Yeah, there are contracting communities, and what happens is the provincial government will give them funding, and then they'll transfer that funding over to us so their residents have free library service.
Okay, yeah, if you could get us those numbers. And could you also get the numbers on what percentage they contribute to the operations of it?
I can give you that number right now.
Oh, sure.
Our contracting communities pay the library. It's $22,000 per year for all the locations. So compared to the amount that we receive through the city, that would be just under 1%.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so Counselor Bruny?
Thank you, Roxanne, for your presentation. I noticed in your weekly hours of operation in the winter and the summer, there's approximately 30-hour difference, so the summer hours are reduced?
Yes, they are. During the summer, we are closed on Sunday.
Both...I mean, all three locations?
At all three locations, yes. During the school year, we do have Cora branch that's open on the Sunday, and of course, the Centennial Library is open on Sunday as well.
There's no need to be open on a Sunday? There's no demand?
There is a demand, however, it is a matter of funding.
Budget?
Yeah. When I started, my predecessor, Willie Eisenbacher, at that time, we didn't have any Sunday hours starting from the end of May through to August. And as a result of the way he reorganized, he was able to increase so we could have Sunday hours through June. So now we only have Sunday...a loss of Sunday hours, July and August.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoponen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Roxanne. I think you're doing a great job. Thank you. Couple questions. I've received a newsletter. I have received newsletters in my council packages, and I think they're great, and I'm wondering, how do you distribute that to the folks in the community to let them know what is happening? Because there's a lot in there that I didn't know, and I think that would be great for, you know, for more people to see what's happening.
Right now, we have them available at all library locations. We also have an emailing list. When people sign up for a library card, we ask them at that time if they would like to receive a copy of our newsletter, or to receive any notifications from the library by email as well.
Okay. That's good. Would it be an idea to perhaps maybe get the schools involved and send some to the schools if you haven't already done that?
Oh, definitely. We haven't done that in the past, as far as I know, but that's definitely a good idea.
Okay, just a thought. And one other question. Is the library ever used for a warming station?
Yes, we are, and we're also used for a cooling station as well during the summertime.
As well, okay. Yes, we are. Okay, that's good. I'm glad. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Roxanne, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Our next presentation is from the Fire Department. Chief Mike Filiola is present, and will be giving the presentation.
Welcome to council chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've been here for a month as your new fire chief, getting my feet wet, so to speak, and getting a general lay of the land. My predecessor did give you a fairly advanced presentation early in the fall, so I'm gonna highlight some of that, but kind of go into what I've seen in my first month on the job and just give you some ideas for thought as we move forward with planning. As your new chief, what I'm going to do is do a quick 90-day review, which is basically looking at where we are today, what I see, look at best practices, benchmarking. Then we'll go into a planning phase throughout the spring and the summer, developing recommendations and ideas. And the third phase will be obviously the consultation and developing of some strategic objectives and some goals moving into the 2016 cycle. Basically, we're operating out of four stations. Downtown Hall is for administration, fire, and fire prevention. The two outlying halls are for strictly fire. Garden River is strictly EMS, and our northeast complex is fire, EMS, as well as our mechanical and apparatus division. Brief organizational chart, myself, obviously, as a fire chief overseeing administration. We have a deputy chief in charge of operations, or commonly called suppression, assistant chief in charge of support services, which is the mechanical, communications, and the apparatus divisions. We have a assistant chief of prevention, which deals with fire prevention, public education, fire investigations, requirements of the fire code, and a manager, fifth and fire chief in charge of EMS side. Here is our proposed 2015 budget. As you see, salaries make up a majority of it on the fire side, total of $13,181,593. On the EMS side, $3,924,800. On the EMS side, $3,924,860. That is what we build the D-SAB for, and then D-SAB recoups half of that from the Ministry of Health under the 50-50 cost sharing. So based on that, we're covering off 90% of the D-SAB through the city levy, we're responsible for approximately 90% of that 50%. The Garden River EMS station, that's a fully funded by the Ministry of Health, 100%, so that, although it comes under the D-SAB, it doesn't, does not have any cost bearing on us. We also have a small revenue stream of approximately $200,000. Again, that, that conglitaway by way, D-SAB administers the EMS contracts through the Ministry of Health, and we also have some, the Garden River is totally 100%, 100% funded, the other EMS stuff is 50% funded. Other, other sources of revenue, the regional complex up, which is the northeast, which we spoke about before, we, we have some revenue on there from the Ministry of Health, which runs their CACs, which is their central ambulance communication center. We do some alarm monitoring through the main fire hall and the communications division. Certain fire inspection services are billable. We have a fire protection agreement with First Nations. We do dispatch for some of the smaller departments in the area, as well as open air burning permits in the spring, summer, and fall session. Part of what I'm going to be looking at on the revenue side is, some of them I believe we're not really, we're not recouping what is costing us to run them. So that'll be part of that whole review of looking at, making sure that the revenue we do bring in is not costing us money to make the revenue. We want to make sure that we're, we're bringing it in $9, so it's not costing us $10. Well, the Fire Suppression Division, that may, is what most people talk about when they, when they hear about a fire department, that's basic response division dealing with, with fires, hazardous materials, specialized rescue, whether it be water, vehicle extrication, confined space. Second, our second major division is obviously emergency medical services, which responds to obviously emergency medical calls. They're also involved in, in patient transfers between facilities as required. We are heavily regulated under that side by the Ministry of Health. We have to be certified on a three-year basis to meet the guidelines settled by the Ministry, standards, regulations, and of course the statute. This is a side, the slide I want you to pay quite a bit of attention to. Both of our discussions in the future will revolve around this. We look at our calls for service. Total calls are 14,500. Total of that is, emergency medical calls are 12,000, and our fire calls are 22,500, 1,000 of which are tiered medical responses in support of EMS. So the two questions that I'm going to be asking is, what do we really do, and what is our core function, based on, on those numbers? Quick sidebar, everyone's heard of the General Electric, and we all know that if you ask people what does General Electric do, people say, well, they make fridges and stoves and toasters. They also make aircraft engines, they make MRI machines. And if you look at their revenue statement, most, most of their income comes from leasing things that they make. So when you look at General Electric, if you're making most of your, your income from leasing, you're in fact a finance company, you're not a manufacturing company. That just ties back to, to that first question, what do we really do? If 12,000 of our calls out of 14,500 are medical calls, what are we doing in 2015? That's the polls when I started 30 years ago.
13,000, Chief.
What's that?
13,000 of your calls, because you said 1,000 of the 2,500 is...
Yeah, if you, if you drill right down, for sure.
Yeah.
But we're also, through the CAO's office, the Community Emergency Management Coordinator reports through the CAO and is administered by us, and that's to deal with the emergency management side of the provincial legislation under civil defense. Provides pre-planning for responses and coordinates multi-agency response between ourselves, the police, the fed, the province, other municipalities. Trains in incident command and exercising both on tabletop and full-scale events to make sure that we're ready for those events that come and we're required to deal with multi-agency interaction at a larger disaster-type event. Our Fire Prevention Division, as I already mentioned, is responsible for prevention, protection, prevention, education, and investigations. And our Support Service, which deals with all those technical side of things, the mechanical on the trucks, the equipment, our Communication Division, the, the communication software, our reporting software. This is the next, the next important slide, I have two slides that I want to discuss. And this is the challenges that I see after, after 30 days in the helm, so to speak. And the first one is, as you're all aware, obviously painfully aware, the increasing costs of emergency services, not just fire and EMS, but also policing, and the double-edged sword is 91% of our budget is salaries. So there's the challenges of maintaining the cost on the salary side, but the same token of being able to provide a service as, as required. We have a culture in fire of why change. Not as bad in EMS, but the reality of, of the fire culture is, I mean, they're moving along slowly, but they need to move on a little bit faster as to the reality of what we're doing based on that previous slide. We need to deploy those resources, both on the fire side and both on the EMS side, as one whole group of resourcing, not two separate entities, in order to deal with what our customers calling us to do, and it's largely medical. How do we measure performance? In the old days, you measured the performance by, could you get a truck or a vehicle to anywhere in the city within four minutes? Well, that's not realistic, that's not required anymore. You don't have to get to every single call in four minutes. That was, for longest time, has been the only measure that most fire departments have used. So we need to decide, what is it we're going to measure? How are we going to measure? Because as we all know, what gets measured, gets done. Again, that point, we have increasing medical calls, which is now 83% of our volume, and we have decreasing fire calls, which is now 17% of our, our volume. Looking through the old, and olden day type files, I haven't been able to find any real long-term plan for, for fire services, which leads to the next thing, which will all be coming to you with recommendations and discussion with you, is what, why, how, when, where? What's our mandate moving into 2015, based on the reality of today, both fiscally and operationally? It's your role as council under the Fire Protection and Prevention Act to, to determine what level of service you want to provide, and then I will, I will provide that. And of course, opportunities, and the best opportunity is, we, we have the, the golden standard here, if we can get a full integration over the longer term of fire and EMS, and take advantage of those synergies, of those resources, to get them out where we need them, when we need them, which will lead to obviously more efficient, more effective deployment of our, of our resources. I need to present to you a comprehensive business plan, moving forward, looking at all these different issues, as the best way to predict the future is to plan for it. In the end, my, my sole intent to you as your fire chief is to advise you on managing the risk. And my concern at the top of this is, we don't want people perishing in house fires, residential fires. All the other stuff on the commercial side is fairly safe, so we need to gear our fire protection to the point that we don't want people perishing in house fires, apartment fires, and that has an enhanced role for public education, making sure that people understand the importance of smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, escape plans. It's no different than when we brought in seatbelt laws years ago. You wouldn't dare get in a car without a seatbelt today. We need to make sure people are inoculated to the point that you'll never go to bed in your house without a proper working smoke detector and an escape plan. And my view from fire is, those who survive are not the strongest, but the most adaptable. And I think for so long, fire has been very strong, fiscally and operationally, and we need to be a little bit more adaptable, I think, moving forward.
Thank you, Chief. We'll take questions now. Counsel Christian, you had indicated you had a question.
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay.
Well, can, yeah, can we do questions? And if you, if your comment isn't covered in the questions, we'll, we'll come back to you. And Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I, I understand you've only been on the job for 30 days, but I've asked, I asked this of the police chief last meeting, and I'll ask it of you this meeting. Peterborough, which has population of about 79,000, so a bit more than the Sioux, they have 97 full-time staff in their fire services. And in Pickering, they, which is a population of 89,000, so quite a bit bigger than the Sioux, they also have 97 full-time staff in their fire operations, whereas here, with a population of 75,000, we have 104 full-time staff. Do you know why the discrepancy?
No, I don't know why there's discrepancy, but I can assure you that part of my, my review is to understand why we have that particular amount. The only thing I, I know about, I don't know as much about Peterborough, I do about Pickering, is they have less stations in a smaller geographical area. We have a larger geographical area, but we need to also, and part of that whole review is to look at station locations.
Perfect, thank you.
Counsel Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Sioux St. Marie.
Thank you.
Chief Figliola, how do I do there?
Figliola.
That's good, Figliola, that's good. You're in good company in Sioux St. Marie, by the way.
I understand that, yes.
I, I noticed the map there, and I don't know what page that is, at the beginning, the fire stations and the strategic location of, and I think Counselor Shoemaker touched on it, about the population and the spread out of our geographic area, which is a pretty big city in terms of the population, it's spread out quite a bit. So these four stations that you have there, there's nothing in the middle. Is that to be given some consideration, or are you, I know 30 days, is that part of your plan to look at the strategic...
Yeah, and I, I can answer that very quickly. And when you, when you look at deployment models, you, you always set, and we're, and the city itself is a finite geographic, although we respond on mutual aid to other occasions required, but we're a closed system. So what you do in a closed system, when you plan out fire halls and EMS halls, is you run to the middle. So you have an overlap of, of districts, as opposed to putting something in the middle to run outside, it's usually to run into a zone. So if you look at where those stations are, the city's divided into four, and they're, all those things are situated, so they can, they're in the middle of their zone, but they're set up to run to the middle of the city, and to the outskirts of the city.
So one follow-up question to, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the chief, so in your plan, are you considering perhaps some strategic relocation in the future?
Yeah, what we'll, what we'll do, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counsel Turco, is, in this state, we have that, that marvelous tool of GIS mapping, so we can take our runs and map back three, five, 10 years if we want to, to see where the, where the calls are, as well as, the, the station location is based on response time. We need to get to a certain place at a certain point of time, 90% of the time. So you may have some outlying areas that you may not get there in six minutes, but you get there in seven minutes. So we'll be doing all that mapping at the present locations, as well as to look at future locations based on the, the grouping we get on the GIS mapping.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kupodich.
Thank you, Mayor Provinciano, and to Chief Figliola. Hope I got that right. Thank you.
The G is silent, I believe.
Yeah, Fiola.
Fiola, okay, okay. Thank you. Just a couple of questions. The one I got is on one slide, and it says, increasing EMS calls are at 83%, and then decreasing fire calls at 7%. So what's the rationale why the EMS calls are increasing and why fire calls are decreasing? What's the...
It's, it's, on, on the fire side, we've had, over the last 20 years, better fire prevention efforts, better public education efforts, clearly better construction methods. So you don't have as many fires as you used to have 10, 15, 20 years ago. On the EMS side, we're having aging population. We have a, a healthcare system that is, is in a bit of flux, so when everything else fails, people will, will default to the EMS. At least it's, it's their portal into the system. And they know that if they get picked up by an ambulance and taken to the hospital, they'll get taken care of.
Okay, thank you. And we also service area townships as well?
We, we do it as, under mutual aid.
Under a mutual aid?
And we, we do, we, we do prince, prince, prince township, but under the FPPA, we also have mutual aid agreements with all the other surrounding areas. Those are for major events.
So surrounding areas, if an EMS call came in, say Guli, for example, would an ambulance be issued to go out there?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Mayor Kupodich, the EMS side and the fire side is, is different. The, the fire side is automatic aid under the Fire Protection and Prevention Act, so if Guli had a fire issue and they couldn't handle it, they would ask for mutual aid through the Fire Marshal's Office, and it would be ourselves, and the other surrounding department as well, which would pitch in. On the EMS side, it's different. EMS is dispatched through the central ambulance communication center. Although Sioux St. Marie provides the service in the city, if, if on the outskirts of the city, we have an issue with an EMS problem, the, the central ambulance dispatch center will dispatch the closest ambulance. It may be ours, it may be Algoma's. So it may go to Guli. If we're tied up and, and there's a call in Guli, Algoma may go there. And it seems across the province. Technically, we could go to St. George Island if there was an issue on the EMS side, and that's mandated by the province under the ambulance act.
And just one more question in, regarding response times. Say we have to do a response time, and we have to respond to a, an, an accident that happened in Guli, a response time, what would be an appropriate response time to be able to respond to an accident on a person that needs emergency first aid?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Mayor Kupod, to Counsel Kupodich, it, it depends on the triage done by the communication center. So if that accident was to happen, the individual will phone into the ambulance number to 911, transfer to ambulance, they will do a quick triage based on, are they breathing, are they conscious, is there serious bleeding, is there serious injury, are they, do they need to be extricated from the vehicle? And then they have a acuity scale that they will assign to that call, and then our response time is based on, based on that acuity number. Top being, if you're having a heart attack or stroke, we, we, we need to get there in six minutes. If you're on, on the middle of the scale, we can be there in 50 minutes, and if it's a, a transfer-type thing, we can be there in an hour. So it's, the response times are geared to the acuity of the situation as triaged by the ambulance center.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Christian, do you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, first of all, welcome to Sioux St. Marie.
Thank you.
I appreciate your candor in your presentation, by the way. On page four of your slides, the Fire Services 2015 budget, you show salaries and benefits at 91, 91.4% of budget. Do you at this stage have any prior history on percentages, what salaries and benefits represented in prior years? Do you, do you happen to know that off the top?
And it's roughly, it's roughly around the same. When I looked at the, the overall trend, it's about 89 to 90.
Over the last few years?
For the last few years. And that's standard across most departments as well.
Yeah. It's just, you know, you look at that number, and it's, it's a pretty telling percentage. It's very atypical of most organizations to have 91% of their budget represented in salaries and benefits. And I know the challenges that, that exist there. I just comment if I might now, Mr. Mayor, if there are no other questions, and that really is that, you know, that number stands out, and I know I mentioned this at our last meeting when we had fire or police here, that our emergency services salary increases year over year, average about a million to a million and a half. When you consider that each million is a percent on our budget, it's a, it's a very big number. And, and I know you've got some challenges there, and I want to make it clear again that I'm not questioning the, the value of those, those dollars, it's simply what the city can afford. I'm not questioning what people do and their value to the community, it's simply a, a fact that we need to somehow deal with this. Thank you.
Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I will say welcome, Mike, glad you're here. The Community Emergency Management slide, the position, I believe, is an 87th... Community Emergency Management slide, the position, I believe, is an eighty-seven-thousand-dollar position, with no capital expense to it, and the materials and supplies that go along with it brings that cost center to a hundred-and-two thousand. It was only in recent years that this position was created, since my time on council. Was that mandated to you, to us, excuse me, through you, Mr. Mayor? Was that mandated, or was it just something that we felt we needed?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. Yes, it was, under the, the rearrangement through what was formerly called Emergency Management Ontario, when the Fire Marshal's Office, fire, public education under fire was mandated, as well as a community emergency coordinator under the Emergency Management side of the House was mandated by the province.
That's what I recalled. And this would have been mandated then from the province, and there was no funding that accompanied that creation of that new position?
No, there wasn't. Similar to some of the smaller municipalities, which were required to have a public education program, they either had to hire people part-time, or they had to bring on a fire chief or a fire coordinator, because they were mandated to provide public education and certain level of fire prevention as well at the same time.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, if you could allow me, I'm going to do similar to my friend, Counselor Christian. I want to make the comment that when the review is being done, if you could identify for us, some of the things, this is just an example of a hundred thousand, right there off the bat, that was put onto us, that we have no choice over, no funding accompanied it, but we're to absorb it. So if you can identify those kinds of things for us, when you're doing the review, coming back to us in the months to come that you've indicated, I would very much appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I have Counselor Fatah, followed by Counselor Bruny, and then Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just getting back to the point that we, you made earlier about comparing to places like Peterborough as an example, if they set their budget tomorrow, and the end result was that they got a three percent increase, does that play any role in what happens in Sioux St. Marie? Is there sort of a, are the fire halls throughout the province intertwined in some way?
Right. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Fatah. Are you referring to the salary increases?
Yeah, just the way their contracts are worked out?
Yeah, what it is, is you have, in the province, and it's with police and fire, you've seen it with teachers and, and rare cases with nurses as well. In an arbitration process, what's the arbitrator supposed to do? He is supposed to mimic and arrive at what would normally happen in a bargaining session. So what has happened on the fire side is, we've had a lot of these salary increases awarded by arbitration through the arbitration process. So if an arbitrator is supposed to mimic bargaining, and bargaining failed, so the arbitrator's awarded three percent, then the next arbitrator has to say, well, that's what mimics bargaining, because there was no bargaining. So you get this dog chasing the, the tail constantly. And that's to Counselor Christian's point about, we, we've had this escalation of salaries on the emergency service side, because we haven't been able to negotiate, so an arbitrator has ruled, and the other arbitrator's not bound by it, but he has to follow the same thread of thought.
Ken, since you are from North Bay originally, I guess maybe you can comment on this. I, I just want to give a, out there, people out there, an example of what is happening elsewhere. But when the, North Bay's, I guess, contract was settled, and they had a shortfall, how did the council in North Bay deal with that shortfall? Can you recall?
Uh, well, they, they had put, they, they put certain monies aside, anticipating what the arbitration award would be. It's no real secret what it's going to be. You can, you can pretty well figure it out. It, that goes back to, it's not a matter of what are you going to with a particular arbitration award. US council have the, have the, the right under the Fire Protection and Prevention Act to set the level of service. So you need to decide if and when the time comes, what do you believe is a, a reasonable level of service to manage the risk moving forward.
So, I'm going to bring up another example. There's been discussion that's been going on elsewhere already, and it's, may, may or may not be coming this way. At this point, we don't know. But this thing about twenty-four-hour street service, say that the city of Sioux St. Marie does not want to entertain that, that, that particular agreement, is that something that would be dealt with on a local level, or is it going to be discussed?
Again, if we, you know, if it's freely negotiated, you can negotiate anything you want. But once you get to a point where you have.
Chief, for, for, just for clarity, chief, just so I can understand, Counselor Fatah, you're raising twenty-four hour, we have twenty-four hour service. So you were raising twenty-four hour shifts?
Twenty-four hour shifts.
So I think, just to be clear, I think Counselor Fatah is raising twenty-four hour shifts.
Like any other, if you can negotiate it, then you, you know, the two parties agree to, to whatever shift they want. Similar to the, to the arbitration process on the salaries, if a twenty-four hour shift is awarded under arbitration, then you either accept it and implement it, or you appeal it through a divisional review of the arbitration award based on. And that's another area that is kind of in flux at this time as well across the province. It's not just local to Sioux St. Marie.
Just getting back to that point about North Bay, wasn't, didn't they actually let a couple of firefighters go as part of that, part of that plan to try and cut or keep costs low?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Fatah, what they did is, they didn't, through attrition, they eliminated four positions, four firefighter positions. Through, there were, and they, they agreed that as these positions became avail, through retirement or movement on, that's all positions wouldn't be backfilled. So they were down to four, four of those positions.
Okay. If I may, just one more question.
One more question, Counselor Fatah?
Yeah, please. This is a question that I will pose to you only because you and I talked about it. And I, and I, I just wanted you to give me that one number that I'm looking for in terms of this question. But there's been some discussion about the possibility of building the land ambulance base outside the city of Sioux St. Marie, somewhere outside the city of Sioux St. Marie. I think it's up north. I'm not sure if or where it may be, if it ever gets built. But if it were built, approximately how much of that building, and to operate it and build it, would be, would be funded by Sioux St. Marie taxpayers?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Fatah, once again. Depending on the size of the, of the, of the building, I mean, I can't give you specific, like, there's no, for example, we compare it to the Garden River Station. That's about a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar a year operation. That's a standard.
Well, we're just looking for a percentage. I, I wasn't looking for an actual dollar amount.
I'm not sure if the chief is capable of answering that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Question at this point. Counselor Fatah?
Clear, I'm not, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor, I'm not sure what you mean by percentage. I can tell you what it costs to run a station. I'm not sure what you're looking for as far as, as a percentage.
I, again, maybe I don't want to labor this point. I think, but, but you do recall that we've had conversation about this topic.
I'm not sure if it's entirely consistent with the presentation before, as Counselor Fatah.
No, but it has to do with funding, though. It has to do with funding, and this is critical. For me, it's very critical.
Sure. And I, I expect fully that you'll have an opportunity to canvass that if the matter comes up, either through the DSAB or back to this council. But I don't know if it's something the chief is appropriately going to address.
No, yeah. Well, again, it was just based on, on our conversation, and, and, and we did look at numbers. That's why I wasn't trying to throw a curve at him. Anyway, I just wanted to see whether you were able to come back to me with a percentage. I'm aware of that percentage, and, and.
You're concerned that if, if a, a station is built outside of the city of Sioux St. Marie, city of Sioux St. Marie taxpayers will be required to pay ninety percent of it?
That is a fact. It's, it, that's not just an assumption that.
But there's no, there's no real, there's, that's not, we're not there yet. There's no kind of building that's being built. So I think it's, it's a little outside the chief's.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Counselor Bruny?
And welcome, Fire Chief Fiola.
Thank you.
Um, I, I, I'd like to speak about the budget. With the ninety-one-point-four percent is strictly for salaries and benefits. I, I know you've been only on the job here for, for a month, but how do you compare that to other jurisdictions, other municipalities?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruny. That's, that's pretty well standard.
That's a standard, ninety percent plus?
It's labor-intensive, very salary-oriented type. It's a service. We don't make something. We provide a service. And when you provide a service in any industry, it's, your costs are your salary of your, of your staff.
Thank you. Also, I guess, what's the area that you cover as far east as you go, and as far north as you go? What are the perimeters that fire services will drive to without having that special clause when another community is required? Where's the cutoff line? Say, for instance, if you go north, where would the cutoff line be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruny. On the fire side, we respond for the city of Sioux St. Marie.
Just the city?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess my last question is regarding the vehicle maintenance. I was very surprised that I see the city police and the EMS vehicles. So that's part of your revenue coming in?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruny. We, we maintain our, obviously, our own fire trucks and our EMS.
Yes.
Vehicles. And when we have spare capacity, we also do some of the police vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that, is that it, counsel? Thank you. Counselor Butland?
Yes. I didn't see, I see Garden, because I know they have their own fire services or EMS. What about Rankin? Did I miss it, or are we not providing service to them anymore?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor, you referring to the EMS service?
Both, I thought.
Oh, yes. We're, we're still contracted, under the revenue, we're still contracted to Rankin First Nations to provide their fire service.
Okay.
That's the contract. That's not, that's not gratis.
No, I appreciate that. But was it mentioned, or I just missed?
On the revenue, on the revenue slide?
Okay, you convinced me. The, the breakdown, because, let's face it, there is talk, well, that we need all of the stations. The call breakdown of the four stations we have, is there one much busier than the other?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland. Yes, our, our northeast station, Station Four, which is our rescue center, which has fire and EMS in it, and most, and the EMS units all run under that unit, out of that station. Therefore, of the twelve-thousand EMS calls, approximately eleven-thousand-five-hundred are from there. The rest are from Garden River, and when they're dispatched on the road.
Okay. You talk about integration of EMS and fire. Is that going to be a very, very difficult task to achieve?
No, not, not from, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland. From a logistical point of view, it's fairly, it's fairly simplistic. It's, it's dealing with the cultures, collective agreements, mindsets, which takes time. I mean, you know, I could issue an order tomorrow, but if I haven't got people buying in, it's not going to work. You know, there's, there's always saying that the best thought-out plan, plans and strategies are eaten for breakfast by culture. And if we don't deal with the culture moving forward. You know, there are lots of models out there that we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. There's lots of models, both in Canada, Winnipeg being the premier one, as well as in the States that are, that are light years ahead of us on this. We just need to find something that fits locally here, that's going to deal with our needs, manage the risk, and move forward with that.
Super. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Butland?
Chief, I have a question. Just go back to the slide, Fire Services 2015 budget, it just shows you. So, obviously, we have, it was twelve-point-two-five million there on the salaries and benefits for fire, and three-point-five million on the salaries and benefits for EMS. So, the lion's share of our expenses is obviously in fire. That's obviously, we can draw that factually. But if you go down, a couple slides down to our service calls, our lion's share of the calls, it's like exact opposite. Like, the highest percentage of our cost is, is in, is in fire, but the highest percentage of our demand is in EMS. So, I don't want you to get too into the weeds on that, but is, over the next ninety days, are you going to try and square that circle as you're doing your review? Or do you see that as, do you see that as something that we need to be thinking about?
Well, clearly, we need, we need, you know, we need to, to you, Ms. Mayor, we need to evaluate, what are we spending our money on, and what are people wanting us to do?
Well, what are people needing us to do?
Exactly.
And we have an aged community.
It's a customer experience thing. If you're, if you're building something that people don't want to buy, then you're going to buy the business pretty fast, whereas.
Well, these are both essential services, right?
They are.
I mean, this is what we're here for. We're, this is one of the fundamental things that we do.
Absolutely.
But it, it obviously, our medical services obviously represent a significant, significant portion of the demands on our resources.
Absolutely.
So, that was just the one thing, when I reviewed your presentation, that really jumped out at me. But I think that represents the, the questions we had for you today, chief. And we look forward to your ninety-day review, and having you back here, and we thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 5.4, flashing light, baseline and Airport Road. Kim Carter is in attendance to address counsel concerning Agenda Item 7.71.
Welcome, Ms. Carter. You were here before, and we told you that when this report came back, you'd have an opportunity to speak, you'd present to council, and we give you that opportunity now.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing the delegation to present this evening. Every intersection has points of conflict, twenty-four points of conflict, according to the Rural Intersection Safety Handbook put out by the MTO. A hidden dangerous intersection in a deep valley is an accident waiting to happen, and when it does happen at Airport Road and Baseline, it will affect the access and egress of the airport area, as well as the lives of the citizens or the guests to our city. The city is not in favor of overhead flashing lights at intersections, and is slowly retiring them as they malfunction all over the city. The MTO does not condone traffic lights on highways. The traffic department doesn't want to replace standalone incandescent lights because it's too dangerous for their workers to work on. And more recently, at the last council meeting, the new policy adopted to use only LED lights in the future. The city is committed to LED and solar lights. The placement of standalone traffic control lights at an intersection and roadside signage of an approaching intersection address safety concerns, but are certainly not the same standards in the Ontario Driver's Handbook and infallible traffic offenses. The intersection in question is owned by MTO from second line to baseline, and owned by the city of Sioux St. Marie from Baseline to the International Airport and beyond to Deschaine Drive and Nakoma's Beach. The south side of Baseline is in the city of Sioux St. Marie. The north side of Baseline lies in Prince Township. Neither the MTO nor Prince Township were consulted before the removal of the intersection light, because the jurisdiction of the intersection lies within the city of Sioux St. Marie, and prior to that, to the township of Cora. Prince Township has voiced concerns because the residents of the area and the residents of Sioux St. Marie have cried out for help to get the intersection flashing light returned. Remarkably, every intersection marked with overhead flashing lights are in danger of extinction in this city. The city has made an effort to mark the stop signs at the intersections, but in the specific case here, ultimately, the highly visible overhead flashing caution light on Airport Road is no longer the beacon to mark the exact point of the intersection, and will never be in place there again. Here are our concerns. Number one, there's nothing to remind drivers on Airport Road to exercise caution at the hidden intersection. The traffic north and south on Airport Road encounter traffic turning to or from or crossing Baseline. There is poor visibility looking up the hill to the south from Baseline, and there is fast approaching vehicles in all directions. With the removal of the flashing lights, these vehicles are now coming down the hill at speeds in excess of eighty kilometers an hour. And this is winter. It's not even the summertime drivers, and summertime traffic brings out children on bikes and pedestrians and horseback riders on these roads. Our second concern, everyone needs to be reminded that the weather on the peninsula at the airport can be more severe than in town. The weather station of this area records the conditions every hour for pilots. The weather is in effect for five nautical miles, or for nine-point-two-six kilometers in the area. So the severe weather experienced here is vastly different than the weather in other parts of Sioux St. Marie and town, and vastly different than southern Ontario. NAV Canada even has an official publication based on their study and expertise and experience that warns pilots of the dangers of the unpredictable and severe weather in Sioux St. Marie, the storms, the wind, the fog, the snow. I sent a PDF report to our Word Six counselors on March sixth. This was called the, the Weather of Ontario and Quebec Graphic Area Forecast Thirty-Three from NAV Canada. Our third concern, the solar lights on Baseline failed three times in December. On December third, twenty-fourteen, there was ten-point-one centimeters of snow, and the solar lights failed. The intersection was dark. Again, on the seventeenth. Again, on the 17th and 18th of December, after 22.5 millimeters of precipitation, the solar lights again failed. Northern Ontario weather, snow, rain, fog, would seem to be affecting solar lights. Our fourth concern. When flashing lights are removed in our city, accidents happen. For example, the flashing light at Spring Street and Albert Street was removed two years ago, only to have a fatal accident happen on Thursday, August 29th of 2013, and a two-vehicle accident again at Spring and Albert on June 19th of 2014. Our fifth concern. Everyone needs to be reminded that the population of the area and the traffic use on Airport Road and Baseline greatly increases in the summer and spring months, with the opening of New North Greenhouses, Runway Park, Marks Bay Campground, Point Deschanel Public Beach, Point Deschanel Trailer Park, Point Deschanel Tenting Campground. And also, there are many seasonal campers or cottage owners who come out to their properties with friends and families. There are also many berry pickers and mushroom pickers and bird watchers who drive out of the city limits, only to re-enter the city out this way, unaware of the dangerous hidden intersection in a low-lying valley. Our sixth concern is monetary. Our seventh concern is if we forget our history of this intersection, we're doomed and deemed to repeat it. There was a fatal accident at the site on the 25th of July, 1958, and the light was believed to be placed there to warn of the dangerous hidden intersection, and it has served well, very well, over these years. In conclusion, this intersection demands special attention. It is unique in Ontario due to its ownership, placement on a peninsula, the elevation, and the severe lake-effect weather. It is unique in its visibility needs, not only for the safety of those living south of the airport, but for all those who travel the road, for whatever reason. We do, the delegation, we do appreciate all that has been done in the past. In 1995, the lowering of Airport Road by a few feet, the 2014 solar enhancement lights on the stop signs at Baseline, the white street lights that illuminate the road at night, this newly-commissioned study from CIMA, and the two recent motions brought to council concerning this very dangerous intersection. We know you are committed to public safety. Tonight's motion, 7.7.1, supports the public safety concerns at Airport Road and Baseline. We ask all councilors to support the motion for the solar lights on the intersection ahead signs as the motion reads. We hope that these new solar lights will be adequate and satisfactory to the needs of all. Thank you for your motion, 7.71, and for the opportunity to, to address council this evening.
And thank you, Ms. Carter, for the, the effort and the time you've taken. Counsel, we're gonna go to that motion now, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Clerk to read the motion for council, and we can have, uh... Do you have a question, Ms. Carter? Okay, so let, let's have the clerk read the motion, and then you could, you could be the first questioner, Counsel Fata.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the motion under 7.7.1, motion by councilors Hoopanen and Nero, resolve that the report of the Deputy Commissioner concerning the flash and light at Airport Road and Baseline Road be received as information, and the recommendations of the CIMA report be approved, with the exception of the recommendation not to install flash and lights on Airport Road, and that council confirm its decision to install yellow flash and lights on Airport Road.
Counsel Fata, you have a question?
I see that, as far as one of the letters of support comes from, um, from, from Prince Township, and my question to Mr. Dolcetti is, can you confirm that the, um, the cost of this, if it passes, if the, the cost will be split by... Oh, sorry, Larry.
Yep. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Fata. I did talk to the CEO of Prince Township. They did express that they would be considering, and of course, they'd have to bring it to their council, they would be considering assisting in the payment of the, of the light, because they are at that intersection.
So, that, that's all you can tell us, that, that they might consider?
Well, I have to allow them to put it through their council, just as they do here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I guess you can let us know how that goes, Commissioner. Any other questions for Commissioner Girardi, or Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. In the executive summary of the report, it says that CIMA was retained to conduct a desktop review of the study intersection. What is a desktop review exactly?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna refer that to Andy Starzansky, our manager of traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker. A desktop review is, we would provide CIMA with all of the information, and any, any other requests that they have, we would provide them all the information. They're going on, on Google Earth and, and, and different applications there to get a feel for the area, and provide us a report.
So, they don't attend in the Sioux to review the intersection, essentially?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker, no, they were not on the ground here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Bruny?
One more question regarding the CIMA report. How long will this report take?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruny, we have the report. The report has given us the results, and the results are basically stating that they warrant the red mounts, uh, the red flashing lights on Baseline, uh, going south, are going west and east, and those lights are in place, and they don't warrant flashing lights either way on Airport Road.
Okay. Counsel Romano?
I have two questions for, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Commissioner of PWT, Mr. Girardi. The first question is with respect to the flashing reds on Baseline that the report references. Uh, there's a reference that those would have to be set back 50 meters, if I'm not mistaken. Is that a minor cost in terms of resetting those?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'll refer that to the Traffic Department.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Romano, it's the stop ahead signs, the warning signs. Uh, the one that is eastbound, it needs to be taken back 50 meters. It's not a big job.
All right, thank you. The second question, and this is something that a number of residents have brought to my attention, and perhaps to other, I think Counsel Kompadich has also received some of this specifically from Ms. Carter. There's concerns with respect to the costs of the yellow flashing lights that this council has already resolved to install on Airport Road, and there were some optional amounts provided through different websites that were in the hundreds of dollars versus thousands of dollars. Can, are you in a position to comment as to sort of the viability, if you will, of those lights through these other sites? Or where we have to purchase from and why? If you can give a little bit of background with respect to the decision as to where we purchase those lights from and why?
Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Romano, the, uh, all the traffic control equipment, there's, there's specs for that traffic control equipment that's settled by the MTO. Um, and we have to purchase as per those specs. The companies that I deal with all adhere to those specifications, and then this way, there's no question about what is going in, the quality of the equipment that's going in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. Girardi.
Go ahead.
Mr. Girardi, the report states that, uh, you know, the light is not recommended by the consultant, nor is it required, uh, found required by the MTO. We go ahead and do it. What's the downside? Is there any downside to this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. If a collision happens, I guess all guidance documents are stating that lights are not required. If an accident happens at the intersection, staff can show it has done its due diligence in seeking documentation from traffic experts to support the direction taken. Now, on the other hand, if a collision happens due to a flashing light being installed when not warranted, such as a rear-end collision, this will have to be decided in a court of law because this decision was made for political reasons, not through the guidance and recommendations provided by experts, I would think.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Bruny?
I want to go back to my question. This report, when I said, how long did, how long did the report take? It took several week, several months, but I'm, I'm not, just piggypacking on Counsel Shoemaker's comment, there was no human presence, this was all done by computer? Am I correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruny, keep in mind that we provide them all the specs, the grades. We provide them the detail of the vehicles going through there. It's not that, like Andy had mentioned, they, they can look at it physically just by going on Google Earth, but they don't just base it on that. They have to look at all the data as far as the grades, the percentage of vehicles running through there, the speeds of vehicles are running through there, how many vehicles come to the intersection, how many turn left, how many turn right. It's a very detailed, uh, you know, research that's done on this, but by being desktop is that they're just not flying up here to take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are those the extent of our questions, counsel? Counsel Romano?
Not a question, but a comment, just in response also to Counsel Nero's question. The report actually makes a reference to overhead lighting at times, or, or enhancement lighting, when not necessary, can protect, pose some risks in the events of rear-end type collisions, so that comment, I just wanted to indicate that that, uh, that Commissioner's comment with respect to that is, is something that is noted in the report as well. So, that's just further to Counsel Nero's question.
Okay. See, no more questions. We'll have a vote on the motion. Does everybody, is everybody clear on the motion? Do we need it reread? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. So, Mr. Clerk, we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 5.5, Animating the John Roswell Hub Trail. Dr. Gail Broad, Research Director, and Jude Ortiz, Research Coordinator, Nordic Institute are in attendance concerning Agenda 7.8.2. 7.8.2 is a report of the Economic Development Corporation, and Mr. Dodds is here as well for this item.
Mr. Dodds, is, uh, are you presenting?
I think what the intent is here, and in the interests of time, we have no formal presentation. Really, this is designed to respond to questions. I think the information was well laid out in our report to council. I think this is, as I mentioned in my comments, I thought it was a terrific project, it really capitalizes on our existing, uh, assets. And, uh, as I, as I, as you know, Gail Broad and Jude Ortiz are here from Nordic to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you. Welcome to council. We'll have the clerk read the motion first, and then we'll take some questions.
It's a motion by councilors Hoopanen and Turco. Resolve that the application of the Nordic Institute for Economic Diversification Fund funding in the amount of $28,325 to undertake the animation of the John Roswell Hub Trail be approved.
Thank you. Counsel Shoemaker, followed by Counsel Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did just have one question. I'm scrolling through, trying to find the report, but I'll give up on that. There was a comment about having audio devices so that people can grab them, loan them, and, and walk around the hub trails, my understanding of it. Is there a danger that people will not be paying attention? There's a lot of bikes going by on the hub trail, and, you know, may cause collisions between people who are distracted and bikers who are trying to avoid them?
This is, um, the, the audio tour is one part of a three-part presentation. One will be the website, which will, people will be able to access via mobile devices as well, and that's probably going to get the majority of the use. But the audio tour piece of it is, um, is something that's available at most tourist destinations, where people can take the, the audio tour, and, and it would be no different than using, you know, listening to music on headsets and so on as you're walking along. In fact, it's, it's less because the audio tour, usually, you don't have a headset, you only have one, uh, one audio tour on one ear, uh, so your other ear is, is actually open. So, I, I think the safety would be relatively small as a safety issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the presenters. I have to plead ignorance on this. I'm struggling with audio tour. You need to, to break it down and explain to me what that is, specifically. I understand that it's audio, and we're gonna get a tour. I get that. Is, is it, is it a, a station? Is it a, is it a...
It's, it's a portable, uh, well, there's, again, there's two ways that you can access it, so one is basically the way that you would in iTunes if you were using your mobile device for, you know, just to listen to music. Uh, the other way that you can use it, though, is, is through, um, it's a, it's a mobile device that you can carry with you, and usually, it's portable in one hand, that you can take with you, and it, it provides it to you in the language. Sometimes, at various places, there might be up to five or 10 languages that you could make available, and that's the the value of having it simply as an audio tour.
A follow-up question to that. The audio tour, is it, does it provide information depending where you are on the tour, or is it just a blocked piece of information that, that you hear over a length of time?
No, you'll be able to pick that out to whichever, the, the trail is marked now, the city has already marked the whole trail by half-kilometer markers, and so you'll be able to identify which piece of the trail that you want to listen to, uh, according to where you are in the...
Okay, thank you. One follow-up question. This is to Mr., uh, for Mr. Dodds, through you, Mr. Mayor. The animated road itself will become an additional tourist attraction when we could keep existing city visitors in the city longer. How do you know?
Well...
Because, and I'll, and I'll be honest with you, we get, we get statements like this all the time, and it sounds good, and it, and flowers it. How do we know?
Well, I think there's a couple reasons. One, we can draw on the experience of other workplaces that have done similar kind of exercises. And I think that the point is here, is, and going on to what, um, Gail has said earlier, is the, this is an opportunity to integrate and engage people in what the community is all about with the existing attributes it has. So, you arrive, before you arrive, you have the opportunity to find out what's on this trail, and then you have the opportunity to experience it. So, to answer your question, our experience has been, and the evidence has shown in other tourist destinations, that the more information that you can provide about people in the location that they're in, the more, the richer the experiences, and there's a lot more for them to relate back to, family, friends, and other interested parties. If you want me to go back and get you examples, I, I mean, I'll have to go back to talk to the folks in tourism. I asked Ian and our staff to review it from a tourism perspective, and they were supportive of the initiative. So, in the absence of providing specifics, I'd have to do that.
Okay, well, then, I'm gonna ask that, that you do it. I'd be interested, and I, I'm, I'm confident that it is, but I'd like to see some hard data. The other thing is, once, if this gets approved and we do it, I'd like to see if it's possible in the future, what effect it actually has had on extra stays and extra day stay in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Romano?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, firstly, I think, to Mr. Dodds. The amount quoted in the resolution of 28,000 and, uh, change, that amounts to come from the EDF fund?
That's correct.
All right, and the remainder was, I think, 238,000 was already funded through other, um, grants?
That's, that's correct. I, I think that the, the request coming from Nordic is approximately 13 and a half percent of the total project cost.
Um, what about future maintenance costs of devices, et cetera? I'm assuming, as I understand it, each person would, entering the trail would get one of these little audio-type devices in their hand?
I, I have to, I'll have to defer to that, but in my understanding, that this is a downloadable app... I'll have to defer to that, but my understanding that this is a downloadable app that you can use on your existing, on smartphones and tablets, but I'll defer.
I understood there to be that aspect, but I thought there was also, is there not also like a physical handset or something that works with this?
There will be some of those available through the public libraries, and 15 of the other handheld devices will be available through the public library sites.
Okay, so they won't, there won't be like a kiosk or something on the hub trail where you pick up your unit and pay for it or something?
No, no, we anticipate now with so much cellphone use that people will just use it primarily on cellphones, but as well other downloadable devices.
Okay, but a person who doesn't have that data device or whatever it is can go to the local library, pick up a device, check it out like a library book, then? Oh, okay, understood.
Counselor Sheen.
I just, I failed to call a conflict of interest. They've applied to the Ministry of Training Colleges and Universities where I work.
Oh, so you're conflicted on this?
Yes, I just wanted to make that.
Well, note that is declared. Yeah. Okay, so Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say that this is a project that's near and dear to me. As my former life as manager of tourism and marketing for several years, I see the value in it very readily. One of the areas that it would be most helpful is when we have our thousands of delegates in our community that are here for meetings and conferences. It's one more piece that we can offer to people for their, you know, companion programs or for some of their downtime. We have a lot of corporate travelers in our city that look for things to do, and other than going to the casino, things like this gives them something else to do while they're in our community, and at the same time educates them about our community. And the hub trail is something that this council and previous councils have spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands, if not millions, on, and this small amount of $28,000 out of a fund that is set aside specifically for projects like this, I would hope council wouldn't hesitate to be supporting it. I want to thank Nordic. This has been a long time coming, and there's been a lot of work going on this for some time, and I just really commend you, I commend you to Tom, but particularly Gail and Jude for their work. This is a lot of work on this project, and it's a very exciting advancement for our community, I can tell you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Hoopinen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Susan covered it. I do want to say a couple of things, if I may. I have had a chance to travel over the past few years, and I have, I have come across these audio tours quite a bit lately, and I find them invaluable. There are places that you will see that you are wondering what it is, and with the audio tour, it's just a wonderful device. I think we're sort of catching up with the times by doing this. I would also like to say that I would probably suggest that we do have handheld devices for seniors, because if I had mentioned a download, an app download to a senior on an iPhone, it wouldn't work. So I do think we should be sure that we have handheld devices as well. They're sort of coping with that. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Fatta, we'll end up with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is a very nice project, and someone that certainly uses the hub trail quite a bit, I'm sure, will definitely enjoy it. I'm going to probably sound like a former counselor, and if I do, I will not apologize. But the amount of $28,325, does that have to be part of this, part of this request for the funding that we are receiving? Does it have to be part of it? Or in other words, can we still get the funding, the other 87 percent of the funding, without this $28,000 and change for this project?
Mr. Dodds, do you have, do you need some clarity on that question?
I'm, sorry, and I'd have to defer to the folks at Nordic as well. I'm not entirely clear of the question. Is this, are you suggesting that without this money, the project can't go ahead? Are you suggesting that if we need this money in order to leverage the other money, I'm not?
I'm asking whether that project can go ahead without the $28,325.
I don't think the project can go as presented here without the amount of monies that are shown. I think the project is budgeted on the basis of having the $28,000. I can't, and I'd have to defer, and I think they probably have to sharpen their pencils to figure out, you know, what they would not do as a result of receiving that funding.
Do you have anything to add?
That's correct, is that we would have to reduce what we're going to achieve with the project.
Yeah, so you're telling me that that money has to be, because you need the money, not because the application will fall through, because you need the money?
That's correct. Some of the, some of the funding, particularly funding for some of the staff positions, is based on the assumption that we will be able to either match certain dollars or leverage dollars to pay certain portions of those staff positions. And so, you know, some of the work has been done, some of the work is still to be done.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I don't hear the part about being able to find that, those money elsewhere. I was going to ask you if you could possibly donate that money to Larry Girardi, because I think there's people out there that are really thinking about those potholes out there, those thousands of potholes that are out there right now, and they're giving those a lot more priority right now than enhancing the hub trail, which, as nice as it is, you know, you have to understand our position. Well, it doesn't matter. I'm saying to you that those are taxpayers' dollars that are going towards enhancing the hub trail, which I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it. But this former counselor would say, there's many, many potholes out there, and we're talking about spending $28,325 to do something that's not exactly at the top of the priority list for most taxpayers?
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Fatta. So do we have any further questions to the presenters on this matter? Do you have a question, Counselor Myers? Because we're not, I'm not looking to debate the matter. So any further questions? So we'll read the motion and call a vote?
If you'd like to record a vote, absolutely. So we'll read the motion, call a recorded vote.
Motion again is by Councilors Hoopinen and Turco. Resolve that the application of the Nordic Institute for Economic Diversification Fund funding in the amount of $28,325 to undertake the animation of the John Roswell Hub Trail be approved. A recorded vote has been requested. Counselor Butler?
For.
Counselor Fatta?
Against.
Counselor Myers?
For.
Counselor Krampadi?
For.
Counselor Nero?
For.
Counselor Shoemaker?
For.
Counselor Romano?
For.
Counselor Hoopinen?
For.
Counselor Christian?
For.
Counselor Bruny?
For.
Counselor Sheen has a pecuniary interest. Counselor Turco?
For.
Mayor Provinciano?
For. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have some citizens here who have taken time out of their busy lives to come down and ask me to present on their behalf, and so I requested this time of you, Mr. Mayor, if I can have permission to speak to city council, our city council.
No, the, as I indicated to you, Mr. Brown, as the clerk indicated to you after the original request was made, and as I indicated to you today, you wouldn't be recognized as a delegation to the council. You have asked all of the counselors and me a number of times to put forward motions on your behalf. If any of the counselors or I saw fit to do that, there would be a motion here today. There isn't.
So just to be clear, Mayor Provinciano and council, you're saying that you are not willing to put forward a motion to wait for one month to approve the current selection so that the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie?
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, no, no, you can't. Mr. Brown, you spent?
So that the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie can be consulted as?
Mr. Brown.
Do you want to wait for the next CEO to participate in the selection?
Mr. Brown, I'd ask that you respect the council's procedure. You spent a lot of time emailing me about the council's procedure, and I'd ask that you respect that. You've made this request of the Agenda Review Committee, myself, and counselors a number of times. It's been denied. We will be dealing with that matter on tonight's agenda, and it will be moving forward. There will be no delay or postponement unless counselors of this council see fit to raise that. They have not.
Thank you for your input on that. I'm not interested in the procedure that stifles citizen input.
Mr. Clerk, can we proceed?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Throw away the shackles of apathy so that they can have me speak to you, our city council, to ask for citizen input in a very important matter, the treasurer. We're not talking about an entry-backup position here. We're talking about a position that will?
Mr. Brown, you're being very, you're?
Everybody in this city within the next 20 to 30 years?
Mr. Clerk. Mr. Brown, you're being disruptive, and you'll be asked to leave the chamber if you continue.
So we're going to continue with our agenda. Mr. Brown, if you continue speaking, we'll be adjourning the council, and we'll be asking you to be removed from council.
Will we be going to put forward a motion to wait for?
Mr. Clerk, can we proceed, please?
Yes. Our next item, Mr. Dodds is still here and has an Agenda Item 7.8.1, Port of Algoma. He will be having some material to present. I believe Mr. Dodds is out of the room. We can go, there was another item on consent that has been requested to be separated.
Mr. Dodds is here.
Okay. Mr. Dodds, we are dealing with your Port of Algoma item.
Thanks very much. Apologies for the delay.
Again, in the interest of time, I am not going to get into much in the way of detail. I am going to ask Frank if you can go to the other report. Yeah, and there's just one I want you to go to. Specifically, scroll right through to the. I'm not going to spend a lot of time in the presentation. I think that the focus of this discussion was the question of the economic benefits that are going to accrue as a result of the development of the SR port as distinct from SR Steel and distinct from previous projects that have been undertaken from the community in developing this particular area. The key point and the key issue is that at the time that the report was prepared by KPMG, which is our only reference point until a such time as we receive a traffic study report and continue through the feasibility and environmental assessment protest, process, we will not get into the specific figures I think that all of us would desire in terms of the opportunities, in terms of the employment, and in terms of the economic benefits that come to this, that are likely to accrue to the community. I think that was the key point of the issue. I can go through what I provided in the report. The role of the Economic Development Corporation in this project, apart from participating in the development of the infrastructure, is to do the business development work and support SR ports in their efforts to secure businesses and opportunities in this particular location. And I asked Frank to put forward this particular slide because I think it speaks to the benefit and the unique perspective, I think, that's been alluded to before in September, but it bears repeating now. And that is the fact that Sault Ste. Marie, if you look at the slide in the upper right-hand, upper left-hand corner, the diagram, what is uniquely different about their approach than others is they've seen the value of reducing costs by transporting various materials and products by water instead of land. Their traditional development of Canada and Ontario has been east-west transport. Apart from some bulk commodities, has been east-west transport by rail. And the arguments being made is that, given the location of Sault Ste. Marie, there are other opportunities to be realized. The fact that we have a large portion of industrial land and a site that is not dedicated for the purposes of producing steel but is looked at for a variety of other uses, that this is going to be a real, an incrementally different approach to how the community develops from an economic standpoint. With that, I'm happy to respond to questions.
Thank you, Will. We all have the presentation materials, and we appreciate those. Counselor Butler, do you have a question?
One question, and I'll have comments after questions. Mr. Dodds, I don't think it's fair to ask you this, but I think you're pretty good on your feet. Free trade zones, are you somewhat familiar with those?
I am, thank you.
Good. I'm glad you were. Has there been any thought to introducing this to the consultant's report? Is it something we can add at this point in time? Because certainly my reading shows that this is a real opportunity, I believe, but I don't have the expertise to pursue it any further.
I think what's material, I will defer that particular question on the report itself to Mr. Dolcetti, because he is sort of leading that infrastructure portion, or my colleague Dan Hollingsworth, who's on that committee. What I would say is that the idea of the, then this is an important distinction, I think this may, our job as the Economic Development Corporation is to support SR ports in the development of business opportunities and ideas. So the idea of a free trade zone certainly has been explored before in this community, and I think it has merit in terms of examining the opportunities that that provides. I think it's an important consideration as we look at what the economic benefits are and whether that is worth pursuing. So I know that doesn't sound like, I think that I can't speak to the issue of whether that's in the terms of reference or not of the study right now. How poorly did I answer your question, Counselor Butler?
Rather.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheen?
Yes, thank you very much for the information. It's really exciting, this whole opportunity. Ring of Fire, as that progresses over time, will there be opportunities for the Port of Algoma with the Ring of Fire? And if so, how do you perceive that?
Okay, well, I'll answer it from a broad perspective, and I would say this from Mr. Mayor over to Counselor Sheen. I would say that, number one, there's no doubt that the, that SR ports and this initiative will look at all potential opportunities and developments of this nature. In my personal view, there is much work to be done as it relates to the Ring of Fire and the relationship that the Crown, in this case, Ontario, and the federal government have with the First Nations that are affected in that area. Once those things are kind of sorted themselves out, I think we'll see a playing field that will give the private sector greater comfort and a greater sense of certainty, so they'll be starting to more, to explore more seriously what the opportunities may be. From our perspective, we see the natural synergies of, A, the proximity of that area to port locations on the north shore of Lake Superior, the fact that there are three rail lines between here and that proposed development, that being CN, CP, and Ontario Northland, and the fact that there is a railway that goes from, that starts in Hurst and runs down straight south to Sault Ste. Marie, may prove to be the most cost-effective way to transport concentrates. I think, and really the question is what makes the most economic sense in this, from the standpoint of the folks at Ring of Fire. The other aspect of it is, are there things that can be done in that port area that will support those developments going forward? Staging areas, you know, areas of consolidation, distribution, it really remains to be seen, but I think that, you know, it's really a question for SR ports and a question for the folks that are examining that as well.
Jury wanted to answer.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Dodds?
The Commissioner also wanted to add there, he had his hand to the, to my question.
There you go.
Mr. Hakti, Mayor, to both Counselor Butler and Counselor Sheen, in the terms of reference specifically, there is reference to looking at all opportunities for generating revenue, increasing the tenant mix in the overall port, as well as the opportunity to look at ways of being innovative. And again, the Ring of Fire is always coming up as a potential, and Mr. Dodds is correct in indicating the efforts that are being made to look at that particular in itself and the opportunities it brings to the Port of Algoma. So it's all there, and the terms of reference have been fairly complex and complete, and we will continue with that process.
Thank you, Mr. Dulcetti. Counselor?
Nice, I'm supplementary.
You have another one?
Mr. Acting Mayor. That was my first question. In the report, through Mr. Acting Mayor to Mr. Dodds, and just like you to clarify this, because during the last provincial election, there was much misinterpretation of what this statement, you know, means, as opposed to, you know, the way it's written. Provides $262 million in economic activity generated by the infrastructure investment in the harbor, supporting just under 1,400 person years of employment. So, explain the difference between person years and actual jobs. What does that equate to for, for, for jobs?
Well, 1,400 person years means that there would be 1,400 persons working for one year, or whatever math you want to divide it by, you know, it goes on the basis of that. I think the point means that, that there's 1,400 person years is speaking to the issue specifically of construction.
Just for clarification, because it doesn't mean 1,400 jobs, like-
What I do think is a very important distinction, if I can say, Acting Mayor to Counselor Sheen, it's very important to differentiate from the KPMG study and what we knew at that time versus the work that's being undertaken to explore new opportunities. And as I said, until we have a traffic study complete and really have undertaken that analysis. But what is extraordinarily refreshing is that we're not encumbered by any opportunities, we're not limited, and, and we have an anchor, that being SR Steel, that requires a port to grow in order to accommodate its raw materials to operate.
And just, and that, just for, to continue on with that, I don't want people just to think that's 1,400 for, for one year. Support up to 1,800 new employment positions as a result of direct and indirect induced economic impacts. Those are jobs over time.
That's correct. And what is interesting about manufacturing, and specifically steel manufacturing, is it has a very high multiplier in relation to other types of businesses. So, there's a great, there's a significant number of indirect jobs that are created and a significant, significant number of induced jobs that are a result of this economic activity, more so than many other sectors of the economy.
And the final question I have, Mr. Acting Mayor, is, are we on track? Are we on time? Are we moving ahead according to the, the aggressive schedule?
I think that's a quick question for Mr. Dulcetti. I'd only say from this, the Economic Development Corporation is, you know, we're actively engaging SR ports on a, on a weekly basis and try to address their needs as best we can, but it's really a question.
Mr. Dulcetti.
Mr. Acting Mayor to Counselor Sheen, yes, we are on track. The consultants, we're in a position, February 11th, to proceed full bore with the study. We've talked to them today. We're having meetings by phone every week. We're also contacting the funding groups and governments every two weeks with updates. Asked me this probably in the month of June, and I probably can give you a better indication, but certainly they're all working towards a schedule. It is an aggressive one, but it's doable, and we've also impressed the importance of if there's any drawbacks or delays, we need to know immediately because it's needed to be completed in order to get the bigger decision, which means obviously the construction. We want to be shovel-ready in spring of 2016, and it might be a year, a year and a half after that, we'll be looking at completion. So, it might take longer, depending on a few other issues, but seriously, the process is there for us to work under that timeline. And the staff that they have are very talented, as well as the commitment they've made. Over the course of the time that they're going to be working with us directly, under the first phase and the second phase, you're looking at about 22,000 hours of work from these two consulting teams in order to get this project underway.
Thank you, Mr. Dulcetti.
Thank you.
You good? Counselor Sheen? Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Through you to Mr. Dodds. Tom, the, in the report that I've read and some of the information I've, I've read, it talks about lands immediately behind or adjacent to the docks, the Port of Algoma. Is that property right now owned by Algoma's, or SR Steel? I'm aging myself. SR Steel.
Counselor Christian, through you, Acting Mayor, to Counselor Christian, are you referring to, if I can refer to the slide that's in the upper right-hand corner shown here, that piece of property or that area that's shown there, I would say frankly, everything that you see in that slide to the right is SR Steel Algoma lands. And I don't know where they are in the legal process of subdividing it and exactly where the line is going to be, but those area to the right where you see all of those numbers marked, which is essentially the steelworks, and the dark area where the coal piles are, and that area will be part of SR Steel Algoma, but the area to the, if I can call it west, or in the side, in the slide's case, to the left, approximately 1,000 acres will be part of the port's area. So, that's, that's the port area. There are some other lands adjacent to it, other lands in that area of the city, but that's the area that we're referring to when we talk about the industrial lands associated with the port. And it'll be developed in stages.
Thank you. Supplemental, if I might, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is just more for my, my understanding of the preliminary information. Thunder Bay, are you aware of what type of cargo is shipped out of Thunder Bay? And there's a reason why I ask that. Because if, if Thunder Bay is a, is a stopping point or a loading point for, say, cargo from the west, it's been primarily grain, I would think. What would be, how would SR ports benefit from that? Wouldn't it make sense for the ships to continue on, or am I oversimplifying this? Like, I don't understand, like, the, the Thunder Bay, the westerly points, why would they be interested in?
Well, currently, and you're going to have to bear with me, this is not my area of expertise, but to the best of my understanding, there are a couple of critical issues. If you look at the diagram that's on the upper left, you, when you put goods, materials and so forth onto a ship, generally speaking, the cost of transportation drops substantially from that taking rail. So, currently, grain comes from the west, arrives at Thunder Bay, and then is shipped out into other locations in, in, on Canada and the United States. What we're looking for are other goods and materials that might, might otherwise ship, travel by train or truck, that could be more cost-effectively be shipped across the lake, thereby saving money and frankly, reducing the carbon footprint.
My follow-up question to that, and may be unfair, but perhaps you can answer it, is, are there goods, commodities besides grain that is shipped out of Thunder Bay right now? In other words, are there other materials from the west that are being shipped out of Thunder Bay that you're aware of?
Acting Mayor to Counselor Christian, I am aware that in days gone by, there has been wood products that have been shipped to Europe by barge, and I, but I can't get into, I don't know the other specific commodities that are exported currently. And unfortunately, in my haste, as why I was a little late, I was trying to get to the representative from SR Ports to join us, but I wasn't, didn't quite make it. And he would probably provide you his preliminary assessment of that, but that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and, and I, it's really a, an issue of interest more than anything, because I look at this and I'm, and I'm thinking, you know, when you look to the west, I know that Thunder Bay do, does have those ports. I'm just trying to figure out where at some point SR, or SR Ports is going to fit in. I just have one quick comment, and I'm looking forward to the report, and, and I'm not directing this at you, but in general, I want to make a comment, that when we get the report and they talk about generic figures, about up to so many jobs created, et cetera, I got to be honest with you, I'm getting kind of tired at looking at stuff like that. I'd rather have the information behind the numbers, how you arrived at the numbers, rather than the numbers themselves. Because my experience has taught me that any number that we're given never turns out anyway. I'd much rather have the rationale behind the numbers, so that I can understand, when I'm dealing with constituents or whomever else, the rationale and the, the logics behind the numbers, not the numbers themselves.
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, I would happily provide a report to you that explains things like the multiplier effect, the modeling that's undertaken to, to, to come out with economic impacts. I mean, you're not alone in those people asking those questions, and similarly, it's because the kind of scrutiny that you bears why they have some validity, because they have been tested on a number of occasions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mano, you had a question?
More a comment, but I'll start off with a very brief question. Mr. Dodds, there were three prior reports done on this, most recently 2013 KPMG study. Is it going to be possible for those reports to be circulated to this council for information purposes as we move forward?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Mano, I, I see they're, they're public information, and I know they're available, so I don't see any problem at all in that respect, because certainly we have possession of them. I know that the engineering department likely has probably the best catalog of them as well.
I think that's probably going to assist a lot of the questions that we, we gain, we go through here. I, with respect to Counselor Christian's comments, I think our most comparable Great Lakes port is actually realistically going to be Duluth, based on what we hope to be able to accomplish. Is, is that fair?
Well, I think that, I think it's really important, Count, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Mano, I think it's really important to understand that SR Ports is coming at it from a fundamentally different perspective than probably the traditional views that we've had of the ports. They've had the benefit of developing a port program and system within India. They have an affiliation with the ports at Antwerp, so they under, understand conceptually and with much greater depth than I would suggest that many in, in both Canada and the US would have in their appreciation of what the possibilities might be. The other part that I would emphasize is it's not only bringing, if I can characterize Canada as the hinterland, bringing goods and commodities down into the manufacturing areas, it's similarly using the port as a distribution point for this area of northern Ontario, and frankly, this part of the Great Lakes. And I think that's the fundamental difference that they're looking at it and the lens that they're looking at it that really kind of, if I can characterize, it changes the paradigm for them.
And I thank you for that last comment, and this was more sort of a comment thing for, for all of us and for everyone else watching at home, that the real benefit that we have here is, this isn't so much, we shouldn't be looking at the specific number of jobs created so much as the important infrastructure that we develop through this. What we're looking at here is becoming a distribution center, more so than just simply recreating the model that, as you've indicated, Mr. Dodds, that, that is in Thunder Bay or Duluth. This is a significant step beyond that and, and something that can set us apart from the remainder of the ports in the Great Lakes. So, I think it's an exciting time, and I really hope that we can see that shovel hit the ground that early, Mr. Dulcetti.
Thank you, Counselor Mano. Question, Counselor Butland? Comment? Go ahead.
Sorry for that flippant response earlier, Mr. Dodds, I really-
Completely unnecessary to apologize, Counselor Butland.
I'll make it up to you somehow. Mr. Dulcetti has at least given me some suggestion that the study proposal will allow us to take a look at a free trade zone. And it talks about being the most versatile, underused devices available for savings on duties, taxes, and other costs involved with global trade. And I suggest that Winnipeg has the most successful free trade zone in Canada, and it'll be part of my comments later. If that's the case, we should be much more involved. Counselor Mano's comments were right on. Any past studies, we should, we should have, we should read, we should get involved. And we always hear about the, the Ring of Fire. Ring of Fire could be important to us, but I look at this, this could be our Ring of Fire, and it's not at Duluth, I don't believe, and it's not a Thunder Bay. One would hope and think that it's bigger. It's a great report, it's very comprehensive, and I spent a lot of time yesterday looking at videos of Antwerp, and you say, wow. And if we're going to employ 1,800, we've got a long way to go, because they employ 1,600. So, they're one of the largest commercial ports in the world. And their relationship is very strong with India, and why don't we get into, how to have a tri-part partnership with those two people? And I think too often, we as counselors are somewhat, blase is not the word, but we'll sit and say, we'll wait for the consultant's study and we'll react. I really believe this time, let's be in their face, anybody's face that we can, be at Winnipeg, be at Antwerp, be at India, and ensure that the other parties are aware that Sault Ste. Marie is on for this. We're, we're into it, full, full speed. So, whether it's a mayor and a couple of counselors getting involved, I think we need to do that. I'd like to see us get regular updates, rather than just, here's the report, folks. Let's put a full court press on, on this one. Let's push it, let's push it as much as we can. Personal briefings for council. You know, one or two of us go in and say, this is where we're at, and that maybe we don't have to have the, the whole thing. Going to Ottawa, so often, you can meet with the three individual caucuses, and they're more than happy to see you. It's an election year. It's perhaps premature, but no, I don't think so. And they'll be very receptive. We're just saying, hey, we're putting you on notice. Through Mr. Hayes, we can meet one party, and there are some liberals around, Counselor Sheen. And I think I could get an audience with another party. So, let's do that. And taking a look at Antwerp, it's, you just, you got to see these videos, you can just say, whoa, wow, that's really spectacular, to say the least. And for Counselor Kepontic, they're unionized, they're called Dockers. Sustainability, guess what? They've got solar panels on their warehouses. They got wind turbines. They've got environmental nature zones adjacent to the development that is home to 92 different species of animals. So, let's go, folks, let's, no, and the last thing, community perception is important. We want to get to them, and I know people sometimes are so skeptical, you're always telling about these grandiose things. And this is grandiose, but I think we have to convince them that there could be something here. And as we saw at a press conference a few months ago, this is, could be, and I want to believe it's a game changer for our community. So, full speed ahead, but involve us. Thank you.
So, Counselors, failing any additional questions, we're, we're going to move on. We have some, I think we have to get to the consent agenda, because Mr. Girardi has to get somewhere else this evening. So, if there are no more questions on this matter, we're going to, go ahead, Mr. Dodds.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just would also add, and I, and I, this is not, otherwise, just to close off, that historically councils and the city have been extraordinarily supportive, and that what you see in front of you, and, and Mr. Dulcetti has been actively involved, we've had a history of developing the idea of multimodal transportation, and this particular project represents the pinnacle of, I would argue, decades of effort. So, it is not taken lightly, and I think that in that respect, we've got sort of, as you suggested, Counselor Butland suggested, full steam ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Dodds.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'll now go into consent. Just so you are aware, I've been requested to separate item 6.3 from the consent agenda. We'll deal with that on its own following it. Counselor Nero?
Go ahead, Counselor Nero. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, my apologies for being late. Had I been here for declarations, I would have declared on agenda item 6.10, the Queen Street Streetscape Project, my employers located within the boundaries of the downtown community improvement plan.
As Mayor Provenzano indicated, Commissioner Girardi needs to leave for another matter by around 7:00. Therefore, we would ask that if there are questions relating to item 6.14 or 6.15, that they'd be dealt with first.
So, does anybody have any questions of 6.14 or 6.15, so we can direct them now at Commissioner Girardi, and he can answer them, so he could, Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Girardi, with regard to 6.15, there's an anticipated cost under the impact section on page two of this report, 74,000. cost under the impact section on page two of this report, $74,000 allocated to utilize EPOH Inc. to, I guess, design this mausoleum. Has there been any requests from other architectural companies to see what the cost would be for a similar design?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker. EPOH was the company that was actually directed when this started years ago. They designed it, they designed the master plan. They have been the architecturer that has designed every mausoleum all the way through. We have no reason to go, we don't believe we have any reason to go to another architect. If we were to bring someone else on who wasn't involved with the design of the master plan, they wouldn't have all the original drawings. They probably have to start from scratch again. So from our perspective, we really have no reason to go elsewhere. So that's why we've stuck with EPOH. Again, this is the 14th, the mausoleum phase 14, and we've been very successful with them up until now.
A follow-up. Mr. Mayor, we are EPOH's client, though, are we not? Could we not ask for the previous drawings that they did for us?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, I'm sure we can. I don't know exactly their process. Perhaps do you have suggestions who we would use?
No, I don't. I think, I think that would be canvassed by city staff as to which other architectural firms would be out there.
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, we followed the tender process. Back in the day, the master plan and EPOH was the one who was chosen for that. So again, that's why we've continued with them. Can we go to someone else if I'm directed by council to start this process all over again? Certainly.
Okay.
Counselor Button, you had a question the same matter?
Started going to another architect, but doesn't one mausoleum mirror the other one, and the other one? Are they somewhat the same? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Button, certainly, there's always changes due to the foundations and what have you. Again, whatever direction you want me to take, I'll most certainly do it. I don't have the expertise to tell you to follow another direction, but it's, it seems to be a logical question, that's all. And as usual, not to disappoint my friend, Counselor Nero, because every 15 years I take a run at this, but I'm more optimistic this time. Now, the projected sales are 936, 936,000. We'll get a profit of 102,000. What percentage of that 102,000 will go to the care and maintenance fund, Mr. Freiburger? Or do we know that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Button, this is the amount that is going just to the mausoleum. The care and maintenance is above and beyond this revenue source.
So the profit of 102,000 will go to the regular cemetery reserves?
The profit will go to the cemetery reserve.
Okay. And, but we still have to do care and maintenance, I assure you.
That is, that is above and beyond this.
Above and beyond that. So our profit may be less than $102,000. I guess, no?
Did you have your question answered, Counselor Button?
I'm not sure.
Do you want to ask it again?
Okay, okay.
I'm on, again, I'm on the reserves, and cemetery reserve. To construct this mausoleum, that will come from the regular cemetery reserve, correct?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Button, yes.
Right, okay. And that's at $1,002,000, so that'll basically deplete that one, but as we sell, it'll come back.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Button, the funds will be replenished.
Okay. The, I'll go to my favorite at the end. The pre-need assurance, I was, it was explained to me, I'm not yet sure, it's 2.2 million, and it's in a trust fund. Is that touchable or not?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Button, no. That's prepayment for services, so it's a prepayment account, and it's held in trust.
So when people come to us at the necessary time, we have the monies to provide that service to them?
Yes, because they prepaid it, we're holding it, and then when the service is provided, the money comes out.
So not unlike the care and maintenance fund, this pre-need assurance reserve trust fund grows and grows, correct?
I'll let the city clerk take it, Mr. Mayor, because he handles it, but...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Button. The pre-need assurance fund is for prepayments of services provided by the cemetery. Those services are cremations or interments. That fund does not grow and grow. What happens is if a person prepays their cremation, the money is put into that fund. At the time the service is needed later on, the money is taken out of the fund to pay for us doing that. So it's, it's not a fund like the other that continues to grow and grow. It's a fund that goes down as the services are needed.
Okay, thank you. I think I won't ask a question like that, I promise. Again, the care and maintenance, the one that's at, at $5 million, and it will grow into perpetuity. And I've taken a couple of runs at that, at this, accessing some of these funds, and I think for the first time, there may be some sympathy. At AMO and some other cities are saying, hey, maybe you're right. I'll give you an example. It's the public cemetery which we are versus the private cemeteries. And one of the private cemeteries in Toronto has a care and maintenance fund of $352 million. I repeat that, $352 million. And they don't want ever to touch the care and maintenance fund. They said, oh, this is the greatest thing, because the interest, they never have to raise any money. They just go, and that, and the rest is, is profit. For a city our size, it was 2 million, it's growing, it's growing, and it will grow into perpetuity. And even Lori Bottis agreed with me a few years ago. He said, yeah, you have a point. To a city of 50,000 to 100,000, you put 3 million and say, okay, we won't touch that. But it doesn't go to perpetuity. And as your city goes over the 100,000, you augment by another 500,000. It is completely ludicrous, this care and maintenance fund. So I will take another run at this, and January 2016, there's a bereavement, a new bereavement authority group is going to take over this. So the whole thing may be rewritten, and I'll take one last shot at it. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions in the report at hand? Counselor Shoemaker, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, sorry. What kind of timeframe would we be looking at if, to Counselor, or not to Counselor Girardi, but to Commissioner Girardi, what kind of timeframe would we be looking at if we requested proposals from other architects?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, I guess if we put it out to tender, it's whatever time it takes. I mean, it's, this isn't something that has to, we certainly would like to get it started. Reasons why we want to get it started is we're going to run out. We're kind of unique in the Sioux. There's, there's a demand, I don't know if this culture, Italian culture, whatever it is, but they seem to really have a demand for these, these crypts. So we build them so that we, we have them there. If you chose to go down another route, and again, it's your decision, we start at this process, and when it happens, it happens. If we have to delay it a year, we delay it a year. If we, if we don't have the crypts available at the time, people will wait for it.
Are we, are we going to run out this year, though? Like, I mean, are we?
Well, that's the reason why we're here today is looking for this, is because we anticipate we will sell out. So that's why we're trying to move forward with it.
Okay, seeing no more questions, I'll have the clerk, you have another question, Counselor Shoemaker?
Sorry, thank you. I'd like to put up a resolution to request tenders on a, on an architect for the cost of similar mausoleum.
Okay, well, that would be a substantial deviation from...
I suppose it would have to come out of consent for that, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So I'm requesting that it comes out of consent.
Okay. So this is, this will be removed from consent?
If there's a secondary, though, right?
Yeah, well, let's deal with, let's, yeah, we're going to remove it from consent in any event. So we're going to, we're going to, we have one more matter, I think, that there might be questions for the commissioner on, 6.1...
6.15?
6.15. So if we can all turn our attention to 6.15, no, that was 6.15 we were on.
6.14.
6.14. So if there are any questions of Commissioner Girardi on 6.14, we can deal with those questions, and then we'll deal with the rest of the consent and agenda, and we can deal with your, your motion after. Okay, we're going to let him leave. Okay, so any questions on 6.14? Okay. No questions on 6.14. So on 6.15, the motion before us, can you just read the motion, Counselor, sorry, clerk, so we can just...
The motion before us is a motion by Councilors Hoopanen and Turkle, resolve that the report of the manager of cemeteries concerning mausoleum phase 14 be received and the following recommendations be approved. One, council approve phase 14 of the mausoleum master plan, and two, staff be authorized to engage the services of EPOH Inc. for the planning, registration, and tendering of the construction of phase 14 of the municipal mausoleum, and with funding for the proposed project to come from the cemetery reserve.
Just thinking about the motion, Counselor Shoemaker, if you were, are you suggesting an amendment to number two of the motion, staff be authorized to tender for those services?
Yes, under the, I suppose, under the recommendation, actually, it's staff be authorized to engage the services of EPOH Inc. for the planning, registration, and tendering of the construction of phase 14 of the municipal mausoleum, mausoleum. I suppose that is the section that gives me concern. I would, I would, I would want staff to be authorized to request tenders for the planning, registration, and tendering of the construction of phase 14.
Counselor Bruni?
I mean, this, there's a resolution on the floor, on the floor, and it's already been anticipated that the cost will be $74,000 to hire EPOH, right? So now the price is out there. How fair is that now? I don't think that's proper business in one sense, because now someone's going to come in at 68 or 63. How...
No, Counselor Bruni raises a, you know, maybe what we have to do here is vote on the motion that's on the floor, and if the motion fails, then a different process could be instituted, but I think we have to deal with this motion.
Yeah, that's fine, but I just don't think it's fair.
Well, that, that's a procedural issue. I mean, you know, I think Counselor Shoemaker's raising an issue of, of how we're putting these contracts out.
Understandable, yeah.
But I think Counselor Bruni is correct. We have to deal with the motion that's before us. Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment again to this. I agree with Counselor Bruni. I also agree with Counselor Shoemaker, but I think we're at the point tonight where we have to vote on this resolution, and I think Mr. Girardi has certainly got the gist of our conversation, and there's more mausoleum projects coming up from the report. So, you know, that's the next step, I think, for this council to take.
Well, we vote on the resolution. If it passes, it passes. If it fails, then, you know, PWT would have to look at doing something else. So if there are no further questions on it, we can call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? So we have three, four opposed, eight in favor. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Girardi, and I understand you have to get on your way, and we appreciate your time.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can now continue with the rest of consent.
Okay. So we're, we're in the consent agenda. Any comments on matters or questions on matters under the consent agenda? We've noted that we've withdrawn at Counselor Christian's request, six point, which one? Six point one? No, six point three.
Six point three.
So six point three has been separated. Any other matters that anybody has any comment on? Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On matter 6.5, cultural financial assistance, I guess this question is directed to Commissioner Apostle. Looks like the requests from at least a few of these cultural groups have gone up substantially, and so has the proposed grant to them. So I'm just, is there, are there special things going on with some of these groups that require them to have that much extra money this year, or is it just they were deemed to need more money for, for general costs? And, and I can pick a few out. I don't want to single them out, is the thing, but I mean, in that spreadsheet, you can tell which ones are up significantly.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, there are some that have requested more. I don't know the particular details, but I know Counselor Sheehan does sit on that cultural committee. He may be able to comment on those particular ones that have gone up, but generally, the amount has stayed fixed for several years at 53,900, and that amount is distributed generally to more than the number of people that apply for, number, groups that apply for that money. So quite often, quite a few groups get turned down. This year was an extraordinary year that they didn't have as many applications, and so some were able to be funded more for the request, requested amount. What you don't see in there, in some of them, is what they requested in previous years and what they were awarded, and that may be the discrepancy. However, again, I would defer to Counselor Sheehan to comment on it.
Go ahead, Counselor Sheehan.
Sure, thank you very much. Yes, I'm the representative of the cultural advisory board, and every year we get together and we entertain a bunch of applications, and from year to year, there can be differences, because some of the groups will be putting on more activities. Sometimes it's a special year, it could be an anniversary year and whatnot. This year was unusual, that we didn't receive as many applications as we have in the past. It's always over subscribed, but it does, this 53,900 does leverage hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in funding for various cultural and artistic activities. So we sit around and we entertain, you know, the requests using the cultural, you know, policy that's in place and is being reviewed right now to entertain them. Most of what was awarded this year, as you can see on the spreadsheet, was less than what was asked for, saving except one by a few hundred dollars. But going forward, we hope to get more applications. We want to see more applications going out there, you know, see more activity, and we'll encourage that. In the past few years, we've had a lot of significant anniversaries, 100-year celebrations, 40-year celebrations, 50-year celebrations, and there's been a lot of activity in that sense. But overall, it's, it's a really good thing. These groups here are significant to our arts and cultural community, and it's going to be a great year coming up in 2015.
Good, thank you.
Just one quick follow-up to that, either for you or the commissioner, Counselor Sheehan. So would I be right in, in saying that if in 2016, more groups asked for money than in this year, this, this proposed 2015 funding wouldn't necessarily be the same for those groups for next year?
Absolutely correct. This was a unique year. Usually, they, you know, there's, there's a lot more, and I think there will be a lot more coming forward, because we're going to, you know, get out there and market a little to the various arts and cultural groups that are out there. And this number, the 53,900, it used to be 20,000 about 10, 15, 10 years ago or so, and it was increased that annual amount. And again, it just leverages so much money out there, and a little goes a long way in the arts community.
Thank you. So that deals with 6.5. Any other matters under consent that council would like to address? Counselor Sheehan?
Yes, I believe it is. 6.2, appointment of commissioner of finance and treasure.
Oh, yeah. I'm happy to speak to that matter. I was going to speak to it under the bylaw that was being passed, but I'm happy to do it now. So as council's aware, council approved the... So as council's aware, council approved the process that was, the policy that's actually on the books, and council appointed me to a committee with the Commissioner of Human Resources and the CEO. We engaged a process. We had a number of applicants. We went through an interview process. We did psychological testing and had a consult with the individual that does that psychological testing. I'm incredibly pleased with the result. I thought the committee worked well together. It was good to have the Commissioner's human resource expertise, and it was good to have the CEO's perspective from the history he's had with the corporation. We also spent some time talking to the outgoing Commissioner for his input on what he believed the department needed, and we appreciated his input in that respect. And as you're aware, I brought the perspective of, you know, a counselor, and a counselor that's kind of looking forward and down the road and dealing with some of the change that's going on in the corporation. So it was a good result. We have a fantastic result from it. We're all familiar with Shelley Shell, who will be appointed to be the Commissioner of Finance, and Shelley's got a great amount of experience in City Hall. Bill can speak more specifically to that, but she's been on, you know, the both sides of what they do in that department, and she's been central to the audit, central to the budget, and she's got a long history with this. She's got the proper qualifications and the proper education, and we're excited to have her. So if Ms. Shell is watching tonight, we congratulate her for her long, hard commitment to the corporation and her good years of service here, and we look forward to working with her in the future, and we're confident that she has the skill sets and the ability to lead that department, lead that department well. I will welcome comments from the Commissioner of Human Resources if he wants to comment on the process from his perspective, or if you have any questions on the process. If you have, I can answer questions, he can answer questions, and Mr. Freiberger, we would certainly pay him the respect of offering any comment if he wanted to, seeing as he's the outgoing Commissioner, and he, so, any questions of us? Counsel Fada?
Comment, but I think, I think the fact that this was brought up was a good thing, because I really don't want to believe that people out there have any feelings of lack of transparency through this process. I think it's important, you know, that people understand that this went through a thorough process and was, it was done in a proper way. And it's funny, because somebody mentioned to me the other day, wasn't, when Mr. Freiberger was hired, wasn't the, he was hired before the current CEO was on, so he was hired by, sort of at the same timeline, where somebody was on his way out, and then he was hired, and there was no question of that. The important thing is that people should realize that this went through a thorough process, and I think people also believe, I think locally, that it's always nice to hire from within, if it's possible. And of course, that's what, you know, what took place here.
Well, let's be clear about that, too. The committee did have a discussion that if, as a result of the internal process that the council, you know, approved of, if we weren't satisfied that there was a proper candidate coming onto that process, we were going to look externally. So we weren't closed to that option or that opportunity, but we did have a very, we had a number of very qualified internal candidates, and we came out in the end with a great candidate. Counsel Sheehan?
Thank you, thank you very much. I just had just a couple of questions. You've explained the process well. How many people applied for the job? How many applicants did we get, approximately?
You can answer that, Counsel Nero. Counsel Nero, Commissioner Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counsel Sheehan. We had four internal applicants and two unsolicited external applicants.
Thank you very much. In the report, it also mentions that the candidate before us today has a professional designation, but it doesn't say what professional designation it is. Through you, Mayor Probenzano, to either the, either commissioners, would know what professional designation Shelley Shell would have.
They recently consolidated these designations, did they not? Commissioner Freiberger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, chartered professional accountant?
Yeah.
CPA, okay. Thank you very much, and you covered off the other questions I had with your introduction. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Turco?
Thank you very, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Not to undermine the, you know, the decision we were approving here tonight, the candidate who was successful here, but I'm glad that we're actually discussing this, and that's a good step forward. But my question, you and I discussed this earlier, Mr. Mayor, my question, I'm glad that we're discussing the process, and again, you know, we shouldn't be talking about individuals, and we know Shelley is the most qualified person, and she'll make a good Commissioner of Finance, I'm pretty sure, having known her for a few years. But here's, we have, it took us from February 9th is when we passed the bylaw, to hire, to hire Commissioner of Finance. Here it is March the 9th, exactly one month later. So my question is, for me personally, and I stand to be corrected, that's pretty quick to hire, to hire an individual. It's four weeks, probably wasn't even four weeks, after you had your meetings in there. So my question is, what was the rush?
Well, I don't, I actually don't feel, Counsel Turco, like we rushed it. I had, when we had meetings, and early on, I had said to the Commissioner and to the CEO, I wanted them to know at the outset that, and it was specifically discussed amongst all three of us, and we had an agreement that if we didn't land on a candidate that we were all comfortable with internally, that we would, we would go to an external process. So it just so happened that we started the process under that premise, and we were engaged a process whereby not only did we obviously interview candidates, we put the candidates through a testing mechanism to determine their fit and what we were requiring for the job. So it was a substantial process, but I think one of the things, Counselor, is I'm here every day. Like, I come every day for a lot of hours, so I'm often available to both the CEO and the Commissioner of Human Resources, and my schedule was accommodated, and my presence in the building accommodated us just moving the process along. So they knew they could book interviews, they knew they could get me the documents, they knew we could meet and review the applicants, and we just, we did it very frequently and consistently, and it was a process that just went smoothly, and we were really satisfied. We had a great applicant as the result of it. So I appreciate we did it really efficiently in a short timeframe, but it didn't at any point feel like, I didn't feel like we were rushing it or rushing it unduly. Commissioner, you can add to that if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counsel Turco. Keep in mind, it's an internal process, so in comparison to an external process, it's probably anywhere from three to five times the length. In addition to the schedule that the mayor had offered us in conjunction with the CEO's schedule, it happened to work out. Actually, truth be told, it was actually delayed a couple of times because of the mayor's schedule and the CEO's and my schedule combined. So realistically, it could have been done even, you know, a week or so sooner. That's not to say we rushed, because again, with an internal process, it's easier to coordinate with a finite number of applicants with a management assessment system, which is a psychological profile that I have great experience and belief in, that we've used historically. And the creator of that test likes us as a corporation and made himself available as well.
No, fair enough, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, you know, we did it in four weeks, and also, I think I heard that we have to do it because of the upcoming budget and those kinds of things. So, and I'm saying, these two individuals will still be here.
Sure, sure.
For this budget process, so that was my question.
No, I don't think it had any to do with this budget process. This budget process is well underway, and we still have our Commissioner. One of the reasons, and I advocated for this when a council had endorsed us moving forward, is, one of the reasons why I didn't want to wait until we had a new CEO, is because we don't know when we're gonna have a new CEO, and that's gonna take some time, and we would like, then we're left in flux, and we don't have a CEO or a C Commissioner of Finance, and I didn't want to put us in a position where we have a Commissioner of Finance coming in in early fall or late fall, when we're getting into the budget process. So it seemed to make a lot of sense to have one coming in now that has a lot of experience, and we could start talking about next year's budget when this year's budget ends. Go ahead, Counsel Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think everything you've said, I concur with. The one other point that I want to make and remind us all of, because some of the previous council in particular is part of it, is that we have succession planning for a reason. And in this case, our current Commissioner had identified, I think, for us and our CEO, had identified that there were eligible candidates internally, and so that was our start point. And as Commissioner Nero said, that enabled us to go through the process quite swiftly. And I would hope that this can go across all departments of the city. We have succession planning in place, and the previous council worked hard to ensure that we had that, and we do. Thank you.
And it was helpful. Counsel Shoemaker?
I just have a comment, Mr. Mayor, which is that I am looking forward to working with the new Commissioner of Finance. I appreciate the outgoing Commissioner of Finance's help, and I'm really happy that Shelley got the job.
That's great. I feel the same way. So any, no further questions on that issue? We can move on. Any other matters on the consent agenda that we'd like, Counsel Sheehan?
Yes, 6.9, new comprehensive sign bylaw, discussion paper, and online survey results. Mr. Mayor, I've read the report, and one of the things that jumps out on me is that there seems to be quite a bit of input, involvement from the business community, per se, but the general public at large, we haven't had a ton of input. Why is that, and what are we doing in the future to get more public input?
I think that would properly be addressed by Mr. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Counsel Sheehan, that's exactly the issue. For the benefit of the new counselors, perhaps a really short summary on where we are with this. Last year, council established a task force and charged them with coming up with a new comprehensive signs bylaw for the city. There was a consultant hired. We did do open houses. We did do a number of meetings with the sign industry, and generally, yes, the sign industry had some very strong thoughts. The general public did not attend the open houses well, and when we did speak to them, it's a complicated matter. And sort of the typical answer that you'd get back is, well, we're not sure what to comment on, and why don't we just look like Petoskey? So the task force instructed our consultant to prepare a discussion paper, and that's been completed. It is included in council's agenda package, and the reason that we're back here tonight is to request council's authorization to go back out with a second round of meetings with the public to see if we can solidify the public's thoughts as to what direction we want to go. Now, we did do an online survey that received, I forget the exact numbers, it was well over 100 responses. We believe most of those came from the general public as opposed to the sign industry. But again, I think what was lacking was this background paper that said, here's the issues, here's the options, here's what Petoskey does, here's what Toronto does, here's what the options are available to us, and I'm looking forward to a lot more public consultation over the next couple of weeks.
Great, and that specifically answers your questions, Counsel Sheehan.
Yeah, thank you. Comment that it has been going on for a while, and we do get a lot of, I get a lot of calls and emails from various business owners expressing their views, so I hope we do everything that we can to get the public input as well. I think that's really important. Thank you.
Same question, Counsel Christian? Same issue then?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment, I had the opportunity to, and have the opportunity to sit on the committee, and, you know, reading some of the documentation that we've been getting over the last few meetings, not specific to this, but in terms of visioning for the city, different groups, different interest groups, and, you know, the exercises that we're going through and where we see the city going and what we want the city to be, whether it's the downtown or the city at large. I think one of the things council has to look at is when the signs report is finalized, we as a council really need to think about where we want that portion, that aspect of our city to go, because the reality is that we do have an issue with, and it's indicated in this report, it is a good report, and hopefully everybody hangs on to it. There is a problem with signage, an overabundance of signage in certain areas. You know, I'm not here to say that people that are spending money for those signs are, you know, they're being washed out by all the signs adjacent to them, but we as a council need to sit back and decide what we want our city to be, so when the final report comes in, we need to look long and hard at the types of signs we want to allow, the quantities, and all of those various elements that are gonna be in the report, because once it's put forward and once we sign off on it, that's what the city's gonna evolve into, or at least become. So there are issues, and hopefully we'll get some good input from the public, and it'll help guide our decisions as well as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nero? Thank you, Counsel Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question to Mr. McConnell. Mr. McConnell, as far as sign bylaws go, are we any different than any other community? I mean, other than digital signs being the newest thing in the bylaw, we've been dealing with, with sign bylaws from the first time I remember being on council. It just keeps coming up and keeping up, coming up. We get a bylaw, and then we change it, comes back. Is this common? Is this what happens in all municipalities?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Nero. Actually, our signs bylaw is a sort of conglomeration of various other bylaws dating back to, in some, in some parts, to the 60s. We haven't really had a new comprehensive bylaw since the 1960s. I think what you're recalling is that we did meet several times over a period of several years with regards to the portable sign bylaw, and that has been amended several times. More recently, in 2012, council dealt with digital signs and introduced policies for that. But we haven't looked at our overall signs bylaw and said, is there a way to simplify this? Can we get a signs bylaw that is reflective of the community, what the community wants? So this is sort of long overdue, and with regards to other communities, I think you would be hard-pressed to find a community. I know there are none in Northern Ontario that have a signs bylaw as old as ours. And so to correct that, the signs task force anticipates reporting back to council in June.
Very good. Okay. Counsel Bruny?
Thank you, and a question to Mr. McConnell. If this sign bylaw is implemented, who would be monitoring the signs? Would we, would we need to hire staff or the existing staff or the bylaw officer? Just a question.
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Bruny. The way this operates now is, in order to put up a sign in Sioux St. Marie, even a portable sign, you do require a permit from the city. That process is administered by the building division, much like a building permit or any other type of permit you may require. And as, you know, the inspector will go out and see that the sign is installed properly in accordance with the regulations. If it's not proposed in accordance with the regulations, the permit would not be issued. Responses from complaints are handled by the city's bylaw enforcement officer, who is also an employee of that division. Yes.
So I can see in the future that this will be a hot topic for businesses, especially if you have signs placed around their, their business, et cetera, so, but I guess it's something that the committee will be reviewing. Thank you.
Thank you. And assuming that's it for section 6.9, any other matters on the consent agenda that council would like to, Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the streetscaping consulting services, question for, I think this is the one, yeah, question for Mr. McConnell. There was 1.25 million allocated from NOHFC and FedNOR for streetscape improvements on Gore Street, and the proposal is that that be sort of halved, and half of it be used for Huron Street, half of it be used for Queen Street, and the remaining half be used for Gore Street, approximately. Or, sorry, I guess 25% for Huron Street and 25% for Queen and 50% for Gore. But what is going to suffer on Gore Street as a result of taking some of that money away, because I think, as we all agree, Gore Street can't afford much more suffering?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Shoemaker. Counsel Shoemaker, you understand the report exactly. That's exactly what's being proposed tonight. When we looked at Gore Street originally, we were going to do a streetscape project standalone by itself, and when our engineering department had an opportunity to look at this and a little more detail department had an opportunity to look at this in a little more detail, some of the services under the road are in very poor condition. They have not yet completed their evaluation, but they're leaning towards the necessity of a complete rebuild, which allows us to do two significant savings. One is the savings associated with that rebuild. And I'm sorry, Mr. Elliott is with us right here. He may also want to comment on this. But the second saving, and the larger savings, was to retain the existing streetlights on Gore Street. That was the single biggest ticket item. And rather than replace them with lower-level lights, if we maintain the level of lighting that we have now, basically those streetlights appear to be in good condition, that does free up funds for the Huron Street and Queen Street projects.
Okay. So, I suppose generally speaking, there was no, nothing on Gore Street that was going to happen, that is not now going to happen because of that?
At the end of the day, the streetscape on Gore Street will look exactly the same, with the exception that the existing lights will be retained, and the proposed low-level lighting will not be installed. Thank you.
Any other questions on that specific topic? Counsel Turco?
Yes, we were discussing here, Counsel Sheen and I, the subject of two-way came up. Is this part of the plan down the road, to look at it perhaps in a couple of years from now? Mr. Planning Director?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Turco, no, this is simply a proposed streetscape improvement project, dealing with sidewalks, benches, bus stops, lights, planting, that sort of thing. It is not an attempt to look at the traffic flow on either Queen Street or Gore Street. Mr. Elliott may wish to comment on that.
I think, Mr. Elliott, you brought that up, or somebody asked at the previous meetings about the two-way situation, Gore Street and Queen Street.
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Turco, yeah, that was an item that came up in the transportation master plan, and it's something that if council so chose, it can look at changing the one-way streets to two-way streets in the downtown. It would be a full, there would be a full study required for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item? If none, we'll move on. Do council have any other items on the consent agenda? Counsel Schumaker.
My apologies for all the questions, but my last number of questions is on 6.13, Evolution of Community Development.
Your last set of questions. Very good. Okay, so that would be Counsel, that was, sorry, that would be, Mr. McConnell will deal with those.
Mr. McConnell and I spoke at length about this report earlier this week, and my question to him is, is there, currently Destiny Sioux St. Marie gets $30,000 a year. And I understand that's sort of, you know, not enough to do much with. It's enough to sort of keep Destiny afloat for the last number of years, but it hasn't, with the exception of last year, where it had the Greater Community Forum and some other activity, it hasn't done too much in the last handful of years. So, is there, I know the report says that you're going to sort of hold the 30,000, and if there's interest from other community partners like Nargoma and Lake Sioux College, you will use that 30,000 to put into a pod along with, hopefully, what will be their funding to reinvent Destiny as a new community group. But is that not something that you could, you know, if there was interest, you could then come to the city and say, okay, here's the money we're looking for, and for this year, we wouldn't fund Destiny at 30,000?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Schumaker, that would be a decision council would have to make at budget. You know, I think that there is, amongst the Destiny Partners, there is a recognition, we realize, thank you, we realize that, you know, and this started just over a year ago, actually. We sat back and said, you know, let's not keep doing what we're doing. Let's see if there's a better way to move forward. We're going to do some base data. We have our economic indicators report. We're going to hold a community forum. We had 130 community leaders show up and give us their day in the middle of a blinding blizzard last November. And, you know, we are going to do a new economic diversification strategy. The Sioux St. Marie Economic Development Corporation has taken the leadership role for that. But out of all these discussions, there came out the concept that other communities, and it's a fairly new thing, this is not something that's been around for a long time, are doing a much better job at engaging a lot of other people. And they've sort of changed the definition of economic development to community development. It includes institutions, your school boards, your post-secondary education, the medical profession, all, you know, nonprofits, individuals, to really move the community forward, much more so than any one organization could. And what this report is actually recommending, I'm going to answer your question. What this report is actually recommending is, let's, there's a lot of unanswered questions about how that would work. Let's take a deep breath. The Destiny Partners have volunteered their time to go out and see if we can answer those questions. Not to see if we can, we will answer those questions. We're going to come back and report to council, and see where the interest is in the community, from a financial and a partnership sense, and how this new animal or new organization would work. Back to your question, Counsel Schumaker, whether council says, well, let's just set that 30,000 aside, and we'll see if we're going to need it later on, or if they want to just end that now, and say, you know, we'll consider a new request several months down the line, that will be up to council?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that specific report? No? Okay. Anything else on the consent agenda, Counsel Schumaker? Okay, so it appears that we're finished. We'll pass it over to the clerk to carry us through this.
I have a motion by Counselors Hoopanen and Nero, resolve that all the items listed under date 2015-03-09, Part 1 Consent Agenda, save and accept items 6.3 and 6.14 be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Very good. Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
We will now go to item 6.3, which is separated from consent. Finance Committee Meeting 2015-03-03, Report of the Commissioner of Finance is attached for the consideration of council, and a motion by Counselors Hoopanen and Nero, resolve that the report of the Commissioner of Finance and Treasurer concerning the Finance Committee Terms of Reference be approved, and further be it resolved that the Finance Committee Terms of Reference dated 2004-01-26 be amended to authorize the Finance Committee to review and prioritize supplementary items referred to the budget by City Council, and further be it resolved that the Finance Committee recommend a prioritize supplementary items list to City Council prior to budget deliberations be approved.
Counsel Christian, we'll start with you, since you wanted to pull this out of consent.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments and a question. I don't know how you want me to proceed. I guess I'll start with my general comments, and then I'll ask a question or two.
That sounds fine.
Okay. I read the, I read the report, and I read the resolution. And I know that the Finance Committee has been dealing with a few different things, but really hasn't had its footing in terms of what its focus should be. So, I appreciate the fact that we're, you know, we're trying to establish new terms of reference, and creating a new useful purpose, or more useful purposes for the Finance Committee. I have a bit of a problem with the resolution as it's stated. Although I appreciate the spirit in which the resolution came forward, I have a problem with having a group of councillors, as opposed to, and no particular councillor, but a group of councillors being part of a prioritization process, when in my eyes, I see that responsibility lying with council as a whole. I guess my question would be to either yourself, Mr. Mayor, to anybody else who wants to respond to it. Is there a criteria that would be used to prioritize the supplementary items?
I mean, I'll direct that to one of the sitting councillors on the, on the committee. Counsel Schumaker is the Chair of the Finance Committee. Counsel Mano had his hand up there. He wanted to speak. But we'll start with Counsel Schumaker. If you have any comments in response to that. If Counsel Mano wants to fill it in, we'll leave it to the councillors who sit on that committee and vote.
Yeah, no, I don't, we didn't discuss, you know, you know, a grid of any nature, or anything of that sort, that would say, okay, this is how we're going to judge all these requests. It was just more so a general discussion. Well, you know, if things are being referred to budget, you know, that's basically just referring them back to staff. It'd be nice if the Finance Committee could get a look at that, determine, okay, if we're going to only spend X number of dollars on these refer-to budgets, maybe this is the order we should do them. And ultimately, it's up to council, I think, to accept or reject that ranking. But, so I don't think it really takes away the power, but I understand your concern.
Okay. And I, and my response to that would be, if it comes back to council for discussion, and again, I appreciate what you're trying to do here, and I have an idea that maybe you'd be willing to consider. I don't think it moves us along the process if eventually it comes back to council for debate anyway. What I might suggest, and we can, you know, Mr. Mayor, you decide on the process here. Obviously, we've got to vote on this. Or, we turn this down, or we maybe have a friendly amendment to this. But here's my thought. You know, most project process reviews involve a grading system. So, what I'm suggesting, perhaps we could look at, is if the Finance Committee wants to establish the set of criteria that all of council can use to rate every item on supplemental, they can be responsible for, with some input from council, establishing the criteria, whether it's, you know, we use cost, available funding, is there an immediate need? We can rank those things. I envision that if the Finance Committee wants to take that on, they can quarterback all of that, gather the information. And then, again, I can envision a committee of the whole, where it's before council, and all of the ratings are up on the board. And we actually can pinpoint our debate based on the way things were rated. It would be a much more efficient way. If you talk about credibility, and accountability, and transparency, my votes are up on the board. If my numbers are way out of whack, now, that's a starting point for me to either defend what I believe should be expensed, or what shouldn't be. Now, that's taking it a bit too far, but I guess stepping back is really, I think, the goal is good, but I do think it shouldn't be the Finance Committee prioritizing. I think the Finance Committee could work on creating the criteria and managing that process. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Counsel Mano.
Thank you, Mayor, to Counsel Christian, and really all other members of council, just for some more information surrounding this issue, and further to what Counselor Schumaker has already indicated. First and foremost, I think we need to bear in mind that, as a Finance Committee, we were looking for some direction with respect to how we deal with the refer-to-budget items. That was the concern. All the other items that are in the budget already, whether they be salary, or where money is spent for, you know, let's just leave it out in the air and just say, all the other items, those are already prioritized and recommended to us from the Finance Department. So, as councillors sitting on the committee, and as councillors sitting, as councillors here, when we ultimately deal with the budget, we felt that, okay, well, we've got those recommendations from our Finance Department with respect to all those other budget items. But everything that we refer to budget, we don't get to know much more about the item. So, for instance, something came up in our meeting where we were dealing with trees, and we were talking about a program dealing with tree removal, or...
The Emerald Dashboard.
The Emerald Dashboard. So, when it comes to back to budget, first of all, we're unclear as to whether that is our committee, Finance Committee, is it back-to-budget deliberations? What are we dealing with specifically? So, what we tried to accomplish through the resolution was a way for us to be able to report back to council in terms of what is already a very cumbersome process when the budget comes around, as I understand it, and as a new councillor, I'm only going to experience that come April. But what is already a cumbersome process becomes more cumbersome, because you've got all these add-ons, supplementary refer-tos, if we can call them that, that we don't have any information on, we don't have any background on. So, here we are, in the heat of the moment, at budget voting day, and we're voting on these with no information as to how to prioritize, categorize them, what they are. So, the intention behind the resolution is, as the Finance Committee, who we've already been appointed to on behalf of council, we would then try to get that background information for the council, do some preliminary prioritizing. So, when we come back to actual budget, we can report to the council. At the end of the day, it's the council, it's all of council's decision, but we just give somewhat of a background with respect to those issues, and we felt the priorities lie. It doesn't make it efficient. It's just something more for council to rely on. I know it's lengthy, but I hope I've been thorough.
You know, I'm a non-voting member of that committee, but I was at that meeting, and my sense of the spirit was council was looking for ways, this Finance Committee was looking for ways to be productive and helpful, and to provide some information to council. So, they just talked about drilling down on some of those supplemental things and bringing that information to council. I don't think that their, the sense was that their prioritization that they would make would ultimately be binding in any way, or would push council in any direction. It would be like, we looked into these things, this is where all of these pieces are at, this is some of the things we discussed, and as a result, this is what we thought was a priority. But ultimately, it's going to be, we're going to go in a committee of a whole, and we're ultimately going to decide. And I think what you've nailed down is that's what's going to happen. I mean, if there's some kind of prioritization, the Finance Committee is going to have to essentially explain why or why not, things were higher, things were lower. And there will be discussions about each one of those issues, and you might beg to differ. I don't think that your, I don't really, I think your amendment's a whole different process. So, I don't really think it's amendment. I think it's a matter of, if this fails, then the Finance Committee can go back to the drawing board and maybe make a different proposal to the council based on your comments. Go, yeah.
Of the Finance Committee. I get it, because I've lived through it myself. I get it. I have to be, I do believe that the Finance Committee has an opportunity here to, rather than running with this, be the stewards of, or the quarterbacks of, an evaluation system. They can manage it. They can get the input. They can bring the data, the information to council, so that we as councillor, I was elected by my constituents to look at these issues and make my own decisions. And I appreciate what this committee's trying to do, but I'm very uncomfortable with a group of councillors prioritizing, or doing work that is part of my responsibility. I don't think I'm doing my constituents any favor. So, I think you're on the right track. I like the idea of creating a, and managing a prioritization, quantifiable grid system that we could all work on, but I'm not comfortable supporting this resolution as it stands.
Counsel Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on the Finance Committee, but I wasn't here for this meeting. And in listening to what's being said this evening, I guess that for me, this will be my ninth budget year, we have global budgeting. That's how we operate here with the city. So, I find it challenging to think about doing either of these things, either what Counsel Christian's describing, or what Counsel Romano described, because I think in the end, we all have our biases. I won't mention the Nargoma, but...
But you will.
I think that to develop the criteria is very challenging, because we're dealing with an entire community here. Everything from a Nargoma to emergency services. So, I don't feel, I think we could take a year trying to develop the criteria. I don't think we can do that. That's, maybe I'm being naive, but I don't think we can do that, Counsel Christian. I don't think we have the ability to do that. And then, I'm not, I don't think that we should be prioritizing the supplementary items either. I think that we do absolutely need more information about the supplementary items. We need the backstories on these things. Usually, when we've referred them to budget, and they come back to bite us under supplementary, it's because we already do know a fair bit about them. We dealt with them at council, but we referred them, because we couldn't deal with it then, because we were out of the budget cycle. the budget cycle. But we need refreshment, because that's over a year that we do that. I mean, I would be the first one to admit, I've confessed it frequently to this council. I can't remember what I ate for breakfast most mornings. So we do need the refresher of why six months ago did we refer something to budget, and what was that about again? So I think it's staff's job. I think it's staff's job to dig deeper, at the request of council, to bring back the matter. And I think it's this council's job, then, to prioritize them, as Counselor Christian just said. I don't think we can develop our criteria before. I think that's now putting an even another step into the process. I think that we've already identified them by referring them, but I need to be reminded, and I need maybe more of a backstory. So that's my comment.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I echo my wardy's sentence, too. I was kind of going that way as well. And when I reviewed the report and the terms of reference, I had noted that the original terms of reference has three members of council. Somewhere along the line, we've increased it to six members, and I think that should be changed as well, just to reflect it. So the mayor not voting, but five other, as ex officio, five other members who are voting members. That's a substantial number of people, you know, for any committee. And the danger with that, and again, we take all the names out of it, because when we create a policy or terms of reference, we've got to think about it, you know, when we're not here, as if we're not here anymore, and there's a whole new group of people around. So if six people have the budget prior to coming to budget, that's half a council. And if, in the case where councillors get sick, that's the majority, you know, it can be a majority, and we've seen councillors get sick for a long period of time. So that's where I'd have trepidation with six people having that information prioritizing the four, as opposed to say three. However, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that I think that the Finance Committee is underutilized, and I applaud them for taking on, you know, this work, and wanting to do more stuff. And I think, over time, council has not utilized them, and they should. It's a great tool. In the past, we have referred items, and I think about the accountability agreements from years ago, to the Finance Committee. It was a lot of work, a lot of work that went there, but they came back with those agreements, which probably should be reviewed again in the near future. So when I read the, what was presented by the Finance Committee, I thought that, you know, changing it to something in the fact of resolve that the Finance Committee terms of reference stated 040126 be amended, you know, to authorize the Finance Committee to review items referred to it by city council, you know, something like that. And I think city council has to start referring stuff. If there is an ask from an outside agency, within department, and council, instead of just saying, oh, let's just bring it back at budget time and talk about it there, maybe have the Finance Committee, if there's a certain amount of questions, and they, you know, you want to delve into it, send to the Finance Committee. Let them review it and bring it back to us with their recommendations, because they can have a nice hard look at individual, not the whole budget, just items from time to time that may want to be reviewed. Again, appreciate the effort, and I think that the way, we need to utilize the Finance Committee a lot more than we have, and I think council can do that by referring things individually as needed to them.
Okay. So we've had people speak in favor of this motion. We've had people speak against it. Do we have anything new to add to it?
Hard motion.
Is it, only if it's new, Counselor Butlin. If not, we're going to call the motion, and there'll be a vote, and it's, I mean, nothing much--
Let council decide afterwards.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll take a vote. He thinks that the Finance Committee is searching for an identity, a more worthwhile identity, and I also salute that. I think that's a good idea. But the first blush, my ward colleague and I usually meet on Saturdays and said, nah, I don't think I want you setting my priorities. And I'm probably still there, but if you did come up with a set of criteria, and we think this is number one for this reason, but also Counselor Myers hit her on the head, that's exceedingly onerous. That's going to take you a whole lot of time. So I'm not comfortable, but I think, hey, you want to give it a try? We'll listen and consider, and if it's not any good, I'll be very critical.
Yeah, my, and we'll call the vote. And I don't think there's a whole lot of, the Finance Committee was just trying to be helpful and useful. I don't think there's going to be anybody that has a significant sense of loss tonight if this doesn't go forward. But, you know, they wanted, they wanted to be, you know, and I applaud them for that, too. They wanted to get information, be helpful, be useful, make recommendations to council. I think it was a positive discussion. But we can call the vote, and we can have a vote, and if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, well, the Finance Committee can move on and consider it's something else. So all in favor of the motion? So just, one, two, so one, two, three, four. All opposed. Motion fails.
Now move on, Mr. Mayor, members of council, to Section 8 of the agenda. First one is 8.1, flashing lights at intersections, a motion by Councillors Shoemaker and Romano. Whereas the transportation master plan included public responses to a survey completed by nearly 1,100 residents, and whereas the public response to those surveys indicated a desire from residents to have flashing red and amber lights at intersections, and where there is less traffic on city streets between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. relative to peak travel times, and whereas it would be impractical to commence using red flashing lights at a large number of controlled intersections within the city without determining the feasibility of using red flashing lights in a more limited area, and whereas to determine if red flashing lights at a larger number of controlled intersections within the city is a feasible option, the City Traffic Division can commence a pilot project in a limited area of town and report back to city council on the results of said pilot project within 24 months. Now therefore be it resolved that the Traffic Division of the Public Works and Transportation Department be requested to advise city council of, one, the cost associated with implementing red and amber flashing lights commencing at 11:00 p.m. and ending at 6:00 a.m. at the intersections of Wellington Street West and Lyons Avenue, Lyons Avenue and Patrick Street, Cora Road and Wallace Terrace, and Wallace Terrace and Goulet Avenue, with amber flashing lights being given to east and westbound traffic on Wallace Terrace, Lyons Avenue, Wellington Street West, and the red flashing light being given to all intersecting streets. And two, whether the traffic volume of said intersections between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. is below the threshold mandated by the Province of Ontario to allow for red flashing lights, that being, that being 200 vehicles per hour. And three, what the level of pedestrian traffic is at said intersections between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. And four, what other considerations council should examine in determining whether to implement such a pilot project. And five, what accident levels have been at these intersections in the past 24 months?
Okay, so, no, no, he's not going to. Counselor Shoemaker and Romano, this is your motion. One of the two of you could speak to it. One of the two of you could speak to it. Counselor Shoemaker?
Well, since I had Counselor Romano seconding it, I extended it by 500 words, so.
Yeah.
No, I mean, this is a transportation master plan. We're always, you know, we're always talking about ways we can get more public input. Well, the transportation master plan included a survey. 1,100 people replied to that survey. That's pretty good, considering we've had about five people show up at budget input sessions. And a lot of those 1,100 have said they want flashing lights much, and they've used the comparison actually in the, in the survey, much like Sioux, Michigan. So, you know, I'm asking for information here from the Public Works and Transportation Department about implementing it on that stretch of Wallace Terrace. I think there's, that's a sensible place to look at implementing it. There's shift workers pulling out there at all hours of the day. So it's, you know, if they didn't have to wait at red lights needlessly, it might get them home a bit quicker, or get them to work a bit quicker. So all we're asking for here is information. I think it's worth looking at, especially given the public's, what seems like the public's desire for this.
Okay. Do any councillors have any questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll have a vote on the motion. All in favor? Very well. Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 8.2, motion by Councillors Fatta and Shoemaker. Whereas the 2015 city budget will be a very challenging one, and whereas a 4.6% increase in property taxes is unacceptable, unacceptable, and whereas the city has many homeowners who are on low and fixed incomes, and whereas city council is going to have to take responsibility and find ways to bring down the tax increase, and whereas every group must be prepared to tighten their belts and contribute to a reduced tax increase, and whereas prudent financial management has to be the responsibility of every group that receives funding from the taxpayers of Sioux St. Marie, therefore be it resolved that staff compile a list of all external funded agencies with corresponding grants each receives from the city and report back to council at the March 23rd council meeting.
Counselor Fatta, Counselor Shoemaker, you put forward this motion. One of the two of you will be given a chance to speak to it. Counselor Fatta, we could start, it was your motion, so--
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. I think, I think we can, we've talked about prioritizing the supplementary items. We've talked about, we've spent money that we didn't necessarily have to spend in the amount of $80,000. We've tackled different issues, and we've created a bit of a roller coaster there. But at the end of the day, we've got, we used up surplus money last year to, as we did in many previous years, to lower the tax increase. We've, we've had challenges as far as the OMPA fund, which is going to be reduced. We've got to put our heads together and seriously decide, what are we going to do to bring down the budget? I personally will, will not be voting for a 4.6% increase. I won't be voting for a 3.6% increase. I won't even be voting for a 2.6% increase. So I've got to step up and say, well, we've got to find ways to reduce that, that amount. And it's got to come from all of us. And this is one area that I think that we have to, we have to look at, to ask, and I threw a figure out arbitrarily of up to 10%, but whatever the amount might be, I don't know where that amount might be. It might be that this council will decide that there will be no changes. They will decide that it will be somewhere between 5 and 10%. But we have to look at this seriously. We, we're up against a wall, as far as I'm concerned. There's other things that we're going to have to look at, and it's not just this one item alone. But this, I would like to see it come forward so that we can at least address it. And we'll have to decide, as a council, whether we're, whether we're serious about bringing the budget down, or whether we're going to wait for that, sort of that, that magic number that maybe some of us might be expecting from, from Mr. Freiburger, or from, from the CAO. We've got to deal with the items that go beyond this. We got the issue with the EDF fund, whether that can be, that can be reduced. I think we have to look at issues like, like whether the non-union staff will take a 0% increase. And that, by the way, would include members of this council.
Counselor, Counselor Fatta, just, we're staying, you're going way beyond your motion now, I think.
I know. No, I understand. But, but I'm trying to draw kind of a general picture of where we are here, seriously speaking. We do have to, we have to use concrete information in order to get where we want to be. But getting back to the resolution, I would like to ask council to at least pass it through, and then we can discuss it.
Yeah, we'll get the information, and we'll have a discussion about it. Counselor Mano, you have a question?
No.
If it's short, yes.
Just to sort of clarify, if I can, the intention we had was just to simply gather some more information here with respect to what the amounts going to each individual agency committee would, was, so that we can see what percentage, if any, we may be able to look at in terms of trying to save some additional money to bring that 4.6% down as much as possible, if possible. So just merely information gathering.
The motion is simply for staff to give us a report?
Yes, it's just information gathering for us.
Counselor Myers.
I'd like to clarify, though. I'm very uneasy with this 4.6% being thrown around, because that is by no means a figure. That was given to us way back, and we all know, who've been through all these budgets, that is not by any means the end figure. We've had three critical pieces presented to us as part of that night's presentation that we do not yet have, the OMP grant, the surplus, and the DSA. So please, please, folks, let's not get hung up on a 4.6%. And I'm very concerned that that be out there again tonight. So I just wanted that clarification in the resolution.
Counselor Karpadich, and then Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. I guess my question would be, and I'm not sure whether you can answer it right now, to Commissioner Freiburger. So what is the dollar value we'd have to find to be able to get it down to a 0%?
A million dollars for every percent, I think.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Karpadich, I think Counselor Myers made the point that there's still some items outstanding, and the surplus or deficit is still outstanding. We're working on that now, but that number will come back as, when we get that completed. When you talk about it's about a million dollars per percent, and that's roughly where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm still trying to get my head around this resolution. It's, it's asking staff to supply or compile a list of external funded agencies. It's in our budget binder. It's under outside agencies. They're all there. What other information are we asking for? Because the, the numbers are in the budget binder, are they not?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, Counselor, the motion originally started with, then going in a specific direction of specifically identifying maybe potential cuts to those budgets, and--
They're going to, we're asking them to recommend what we should cut there?
Well, I think Counselor Fatta wanted to put this on council's agenda and say, we need to have a conversation about these agencies and how much we fund them. And so he wanted to put the issue in front of council in a consolidated way. So he wanted a specific report that had all the information, so we could have a discussion about the funding at different agencies.
On the 23rd? Have that discussion on the 23rd?
Counselor Fatta, was that your intention? I mean, it's, I don't want to--
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all that's there. I don't know. I guess, I just looked at it as being a little bit redundant, because that information I've read, it's there, and historically, we, you know, put our game plan together, and we'll do it at budget. But if it's the intent to do it before budget, I'm game. I can support this if we're going to have this conversation on the 23rd. Other than that, I think we're just asking staff to take the page out of the budget book and copy it and put it in our agenda back.
Well, Counselor Fatta wants to have the conversation. That's correct, Counselor Fatta?
I want to have a conversation earlier rather than later. And if we're going to get serious about it, we have to have it earlier.
Then, Mr. Mayor, that's different than just asking for a list of outside agencies. We're going to have a discussion next, at the March 23rd council meeting, on outside agencies, then. That's my understanding.
Well, the, the resolution has city reporting back on March 23rd. I guess it'd be a matter of discussion with the General Review Committee if that was something that we would then have on the agenda for discussion, maybe in committee of the whole. You know, maybe I'm partly responsible for this, because the original motion had a specific identified percentage cut. And I contacted Counselor Fatta and said, I don't think that the way to go about this is just to kind of carte blanche, say this is what we'll do. The way to go about it is ask for the information as you are, and we'll have a discussion about it. We'll see what council wants to do.
And, and again, I'm fine. I would just like to be ready for that.
Sure.
Because there are a number, a good number of outside agencies that depend on municipal funding.
That's right.
And they certainly want to know if we're going to be looking at their funding on the 23rd.
Well, I think that's, that's maybe part of what Counselor Fatta is doing here, is putting everybody on notice that he wants to have this discussion. Whether or not it would be appropriate for the March 23rd meeting is a matter of how long that agenda will be, because this would be a very lengthy discussion.
Again, and I think that, I think that the outside agencies should be put on notice. This happened before, some, a few years back, and it did cause some problems, because they didn't know that we were looking at it in this way.
Counselor Fatta, would you be friendly to amending the date in the motion for the, for the report back?
Absolutely.
So there you go. So that, I think that satisfies that, and it can move the matter into April, and outside agencies would have notice, and council would have time to prepare for that discussion. Counselor Sheehan?
Budget meeting? When's the budget meeting?
April 20th and 21st.
So it's relatively close, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Myers?
When I read this on Sioux today, and expressed my concern from my vacation site, I still have the same concerns. I think-- I, I think that we're running by the seat of our pants here to try and do something on the run. I think that the most that we should do this year, if council decides they want to take a look at reviewing outside agencies' funding levels with the intent of cutting it, you need to give a year's notice. You can't do that now. These folks are a quarter of the way through their year. People forget, the budget started in January. Just because we're not dealing with the budget till April 21st, the budget year for funded outside agencies is almost halfway over by the time we set the levy. So, guys, we're, we're back to the nickels and dimes again. If we want to do serious work in serious times and bring down a serious levy, do the hard stuff. Go after our own staff, go after ourselves. You know, you pick on the outside agencies because they're low-hanging fruit, as the expression is. And I really think that further to what councillor Nero was, I think, driving at, you can't have people be advised that they're going to be up for scrutiny and not given an opportunity to present back and say, you know what, you're already cutting me to the bone, here's what'll happen. You know, do you want a library closed? Do you want a gallery shut down, an art gallery? I mean, I really think, folks, that let's step back a little bit and be responsible in our budget. I think this belongs in budget. We're coming up to budget April 20th. Let's deal with it then, and if you want outside agencies to present, so that we can consider that night cutting their funding, then please, give them the opportunity to be here.
Councillor Shoemaker?
I think our process protects outside agencies anyways. I mean, we're going to get this information on March 23rd, or whenever, if there's an amendment to this resolution. And if there was ever going to be a cut considered, it would have to be moved, seconded, and supported. So, you know, I don't think that there's any concern that just by getting this list of information, and I, it was sent out the other day, but I mean, it'll be on our, on our agenda package, it'll be an item for discussion. I don't see anything wrong with that. So, that's why I seconded the motion. It's not asking to cut these agencies' funding, it's asking for a list of agencies, what they get, and then everything's up for discussion. We control our budget. I don't think there's any requirement, other than a few outside agencies, to give any notice. And so, I mean, if, if a, a specific cut that one councillor wants can find a mover and a seconder in seven votes, well, so be it.
So be it. Councillor Romano?
I think probably enough said, but I will just mention one thing, point of clarification here. We were in the course of a Finance Committee meeting when we were discussing potential avenues. I recall having a conversation with our commissioner, Mr. Freiburger, asked for this information that is the very subject of this motion or resolution. That was provided within 48 hours, and, and now this is on the agenda. I, we've already received the information. It's something for us as a Finance Committee to discuss and evaluate. In the course of those discussions, we learned that there was 12-month notice periods that had to be provided to certain agencies, not to others. So, it was just a question of us trying to identify that, again, just trying to do our due diligence moving forward to April budget deliberations.
Councillor Fatta, I think this matter's resolved from this perspective. You very clearly put everybody on notice that you want to have these discussions, including the outside agencies. You have a right to have the discussions. You're a city councillor, I think all, all of you have a right to discuss any highlighted item in our budget. People now know that we're going to have these discussions. The information's available, it was provided in our budget packages, but also recently the commissioners provided it to the Finance Committee, I think at the Finance Committee's request. So, I don't see any issue with it just being provided to council as a whole, and I don't think you need a resolution in that respect. And councillor Fatta, are you satisfied if you want to have these discussions? What councillor Myers and I think councillor Sheehan are suggesting is that the natural time to have them would be in April. If you want to have them before, before that, then you can make an adjust, a request to the agenda review committee, and we can have the discussions. There'd really only be one meeting before that. Yeah. Councillor Fatta?
What I, what I would add to that is that I'm not looking for just a discussion, and just, as we probably will have in April, and I'm looking for, for results, because we weren't presented a 4.6 or something close to 4.6 that long ago ourselves. But if we're going to deal with this in a concrete way, where we're going to make some hard and difficult and intelligent decisions, everybody has to be at the table. And it seems like we're, like we're, we're, we're feeling sorry for these agencies. I feel, I feel they do a good service, don't get me wrong, but we're leaving out the more important people that I'm, and without trying to sound like I'm grandstanding, but we've got people that are being laid off, and they may be off for eight, nine months. We've got people that are on fixed incomes, we've got people on low incomes. Those people have to deal with the tax increase, so.
Well, we're all, I think, we're all, I'm sensitive to that too, councillor Fatta. I think we're all sensitive to that. I, I think what you're, you're wanting then, is you're wanting to, are you wanting to move a motion where you propose a specific cut to all the agencies?
However we get there, I want this to be, be a concrete discussion, not just where we're going to talk about it, and then everybody votes to leave everything the way it is.
Well, the motion that's before us, councillor Fatta, the motion that's before us, the information, you want the information, as councillor Romano's indicated, the information's recently been provided to the Finance Committee. So, it'll, it'll be circulated to the remainder of council. So, taking a look at the motion, are you satisfied in that respect on the motion before us, or do you, do you want the motion before us to proceed as you've written it, and we'll just call for a vote on it?
I'm prepared to change the date. I just want it to be more than just a discussion about it. We're going to discuss it, and then it's just going to be status quo. That's what I'm afraid of. That's why I'm, I'm saying earlier rather than later. If, if we're just going to have a conversation about this, and then it's going to remain the same, no changes whatsoever to any of those-
You can't anticipate what 12 people are going to do.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm suggesting, councillor Fatta, maybe what you want to see is some action on some reductions. So, maybe you'd have to apply yourself then to what kind of reductions you'd want to see, and you'd have to, to, to bring those to the table. I can't, I mean, I'm sure the discussion will be fruitful. I can't draw determination on what this council as a whole will decide to do when we have that discussion.
None of us really know that.
That's right. But I think you're being reassured that we're going to have that discussion.
That's what, what I want reassurance of.
Councillor Butland?
If we're serious, and if councillor Fatta is really serious about this, stop playing at the fringes. This is not going to get us anywhere near if that's where you want to go. Get serious. And if you're serious about cutting some of these things, and you want a discussion, say, I move, get a seconder, and say, I cut this group by whatever. And then, then you have a discussion. This is so open-ended and so, you know, we're going to have it in April, right before budget date. There are thousands of different items that we could have that similar discussion with. So, I think it's extraneous, irrelevant. Thank you.
Well, look, no, councillor Butland, I don't, I don't think we can say it's extraneous and irrelevant. I think we have to respect the fact that councillor Fatta has something he's concerned about here, and he's trying to bring it to council, and he wants to have a discussion on it. Whatever council's ultimate decision is, it will be, but, but I, I respect the fact that he, he, he wants to try and put this on our agenda and have a discussion on it. So, councillor, councillor Bruny?
The resolution that states, resolve that staff compile a list of external funding agencies with this corresponding grant each receives from the city and report back to council at March 23rd council meeting. This is all that councillor Fatta wants.
Yeah, it's not, it's not- No, that is, that's all he's asking for the motion.
He wants to talk about it, but allow him, if, if he has a mover and a seconder.
So, let's, let, listen, we've all spoken to this, let's call the vote on it.
Yep.
All in favor of councillor Fatta and councillor Shoemaker's resolution? All in favor?
Any opposed? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'll go to the bylaw section of the meeting. There are two that we deal with separately because of community interests. First one is 11.1, bylaw 201544, motion by councillors Shoemaker and Nero. Resolve that bylaw 201544 being a bylaw to appoint inspectors under the Building Code Act 1992 and municipal law enforcement officers under the Police Services Act be passed in open council this ninth day of March 2015.
Any questions, councillors? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next one, motion by councillors Shoemaker and Turco, resolve that bylaw 201543 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a letter of engagement with a master consultant between the city and KPMG LLP and ACOM Canada Limited for the Port of Algoma be passed in open council this ninth day of March 2015.
Any questions, councillors? All in favor? Carried.
Motion by councillors Shoemaker and Turco, resolve that all the bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date 20150309 and the addendum, save and accept 201543 and 44-